Before we move on to the main items of business, I'd like to introduce the officers sitting at the table in front of me, going from my left anti-clockwise. Elizabeth Sims, Head of Planning. Gemma Patterson, Team Leader. Rebecca Robinson, Principal Planning Officer. Richard Cooper from Highways. Patrick Arthur's the Deputy Development Control Manager and Lewis Jones, our planning lawyer. So if we move on to the main items of business, the first item is the minutes. They've been on the table before you for the last 30 minutes. Are you happy that I sign them as a true record? Thank you. Emma, any apologies for absence?
Yes, we have apologies from Councillors Carol Coburn, Peter Ishwood, John Gray, Val Henry, Simon Inchbold, John Ward, and we have substitutes councillors John Fraser and Patricia Ellis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions by members of the public or indeed from members of the committee?
None for either.
Beth isn't here, so I expect one of you is going to introduce the performance against government targets for us, please, officers.
Thank you, Chairman. I can pick that up. Members, on page five of your agenda, you've got your regular update on the performance from the Planning Service. You can see, as set out, that we're doing well on all indicators. The critical indicator that we're looking at closely is, of course, the major appeals target. As I said to you a couple of weeks ago, notwithstanding the Follyhill decision which fell into the previous accounting period, we're now looking at best estimate for the next accounting period for which we haven't yet had the government published results, but we're looking at a target of about 5.48, which is much more hopeful. So I hope that's helpful to members. Happy to take any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So we move on to the main item for discussion this evening, which is application for planning permission, reference WA 2018 1815, land opposite Milford Golf Club Station Lane, Milford. And Jessica is going to present the application, ably assisted by Patrick when she runs out of breath. Thank you.
I'd like to start by setting out some broad principles to support your assessment this evening, before then handing over to Jessica, who will take you through the plans, and indeed Patrick's going to talk to the update sheet. So firstly, I'd like to be clear about the decision-making framework. Pursuant to section 38 subsection six of the Planning and Capulatory Purchase Act, as you're aware, the determination of a planning application must be made in accordance with the development plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise. The point for your decision tonight, then, must be the development plan for the borough. The development plan, as set out in your report, comprises the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2018, Part One, Strategic Policies and Sites, but also the saved policies of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002. The relevant material considerations are set out in the report. In the officer's view, the application accords with the development plan. Local Plan Part One has removed the site from the Green Belt and allocated it for development purposes under policy SS6 of the plan. So there's no site-specific policy constraining development on this site. It's effectively white for purposes of the local plan. This part of the site effectively forms an extension to the settlement area of Milford, where, as members are aware, the principle of residential development and other built development is acceptable. So in planning policy terms, the consideration should therefore be largely one of assessment of detail and impact, not one of policy principle. Secondly, this is an outline application, so only the broad principle of development in line with the planning, the local plan, and the access are tonight being considered. As you're fully aware, a planning permission can be dealt with in two parts: the outlined stage, the principle, then subsequently the detailed stage, the reserved matters. Both parts together constitute the permission in law. Much has been made in representations that we've received in relation to this application in respect of the number of dwellings proposed, but members, please be clear that this is an application for up to 200 dwellings. So the judgment this evening is whether you are satisfied that up to 200 dwellings could be accommodated upon the site in a satisfactory way, not that 200 will definitely be acceptable. So there's a distinct difference in that. And it will be for the other reserved matters: layout, appearance, landscaping and scale to demonstrate acceptability in respect of these matters. A third point I just wanted to refer to was to confirm that the judicial review in respect to the local plan site allocation last year was unsuccessful. The local plan, including this strategic site, is sound, valid and up to date, and therefore the committee can and should be confident in following the lead of policy SS6, that development of this site is acceptable in principle. With respect to this application, the outstanding issues in relation to the covenant on the land, for which various letters of representation have made reference to, are non-material matters. In relation to flood risk, this is covered at length in the report and the update sheet, and Jessica will refer to it again in her presentation. But I wanted to be very clear that very careful consideration has been given to these matters in the normal way. The flood risk assessment has been very carefully scrutinised, and subject to the inclusion of relevant conditions that are shown in the report, there is no objection from the EA, the relevant statutory consultee. The built form, the houses that are proposed, will be sighted on land within the site of the lowest flood risk, Zone One, in compliance with the adopted local plan policy. One further key area of concern for many third parties has been in relation to highway matters. And as the Chairman has said, Richard Cooper is here again this evening from the County Highway Authority to helpfully help support members' understanding of the transport impact and the proposed mitigation. But you will note that there is no technical highway objection to the proposal, and that the mitigation that's been proposed and negotiated is considered to acceptably mitigate the impact of the development. Comments have been raised, however, in relation to the pedestrian and cycle links connecting the development with the outside of the site. As I said earlier, the starting point for your assessment is the local plan policy SS6, and criterion C requires that sustainable transport measures are provided. As the report sets out, the proposal has appropriately addressed these matters, but in order to give members additional confidence that further consideration will be given to these matters at reserve matter stage, additional conditions that you'll have seen in the update report have been recommended to be attached to your decision this evening. Jessica and probably Richard will make reference to those, but we would warmly invite you to attach those additional conditions, which should give you further comfort in securing compliance with that criterion of the local plan, and the applicant has welcomed the inclusion of those and is happy that they are additionally attached. Members, yesterday, a revision to the National Planning Policy Framework was published, and I have forwarded you this today as a link, so I hope you've seen that. I'm sure you probably haven't had a chance to read every word of it, but it is my duty to inform you, one, that it's been published, and, two, to alert you to the fact that we're of the view that there is no new national policy consideration within that document which suggests that a different recommendation should be reached to those set out in the officer's report. The results of the government's housing delivery tests have also been published today. So it's been a big day in planning terms, just before this meeting. These confirm that Waverley has delivered 79% of its requirement. Given that this is below the 85% threshold, a 20% buffer, rather than a 5% buffer, will now need to be applied to the five-year housing land supply requirement. It's disappointing from our viewpoint, but we've been monitoring housing delivery closely, so this is actually better than we thought we might be at, and it's better than several authorities in Surrey, but it is still below that 85% buffer. Importantly, given the policy context I've described, this is not a case where, as local planning authority, you need to weigh up whether the council can demonstrate a five-year housing land supply in respect of understanding whether the tilted balance applies. That is because the presumption in favour of sustainable development already applies on this site, which has been released from the Green Belt and is acceptable in principle. This is not a countryside site, or one that is otherwise constrained in planning policy terms. However, the significance of the site in housing delivery terms is highly material to your consideration. The site is expected to deliver some 175 dwellings as part of the five-year supply from the 1st of April 2018. So if permission is refused or delayed, that delivery expectation will clearly be frustrated, and the impact of under-delivery, as members know, is felt borough-wide and particularly in relation to parts of the borough which do not benefit from Green Belt protection. So members are familiar with that challenge, and you'll recollect the advice is similar to the advice I gave you in respect of the Aaron's Hill application in Godleming earlier in the year. So this point does require the committee to consider the strategic and borough-wide implications of the development and not just the local ones. Fundamentally, this is Milford and Whitlys, or one of their main contributions to meeting the plan growth of Part One of the local plan and to meeting acute local affordable housing needs, in a way that other strategic sites have already done in Cranley, Farnham, Allfold and now Godleming. Finally, Chairman, the question has been raised again in respect of the timing of the current decision in relation to the implementation of SIL on the 1st of March, now only a couple of weeks away. But members will have seen from the application details, the application was submitted in October of last year before SIL was adopted, and council's advice is very clear that a decision to defer the application to trigger SIL liability would not be a proper exercise of the council's planning powers. And Chairman, at this point, just wanted to draw members' attention again to the officer's recommendation C on the update sheet. This is the same recommendation as we included for the Aaron's Hill application last month. Just to be clear and avoid any confusion, I've just made about SIL. This additional recommendation is simply procedural and seeks to cover off the unlikely eventuality that the issuing of any decision occurs after the 1st of March. This is not likely, but if it does happen, then the additional recommendation will avoid repetition and further unnecessary committee time on matters that technically will already have been decided. So the adjustments of payments from the section 106 to SIL will be made by officers in accordance with the SIL regulations. So I realise that's a lot of words. Thank you very much for listening to those. I trust that was useful. I'm now going to pass over to Jessica to take members through the plan presentation. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members. So the first few slides of this presentation are just going to put the application site in context, and then the rest of the presentation will focus on the details of the site and the scheme for members tonight. The application presented for members tonight is for outline consent with all matters reserved except for access for up to 200 dwellings, the provision of an onsite SANG and associated infrastructure. So the application site is located south of the village of Milford and north of Milford Railway Station. Godleming is located to the north-east and access along Portsmouth Road. Station Lane is to the east, which links to Church Road. So that's here, Station Lane, Portsmouth Road, Godleming's up here, Whitlys, Milford. So the application site... The application site is shown edged in red on the screen. It is in a regular shape with a total area of 13.2 hectares and a developable area measuring approximately 10.92 hectares. The site forms part of Milford Golf Course and the site is bound to the... The site is bound to the north and west by a row of thick vegetation and the River Ock. Mature trees bound the site to the south. Trees also form boundary along the east of the site with Station Lane. The land levels slope slightly from north to west of the site, so from here down towards the River Ock, which is around this area of the site here. To the north and west of the site, residential dwellings are set back from the site boundaries, south of Church Road and east of Pettworth Road. Milford Golf Club is located to the west, along with the Golf Club House, which is here, and the rest of the Golf Club is this area of the site here. There's a singular residential detached dwelling to the east of the site, the other side of Station Road, and a single detached dwelling to the south of the site. This is an aerial photograph of the site, where the surrounding character of the area can clearly be seen, with residential areas of Milford to the north and west of the site, the Golf Club to the east, Milford Railway Station to the south. You can also clearly see the vegetation of the site on this slide more clearly, which bounds the site as this shows. Milford Railway Station's down here. This slide shows the surrounding context of the site. The main village centre of Milford is located to the northern boundary of the site and provides shops, healthcare facilities, sports and leisure facilities, community facilities and education facilities. To the south of the site, by approximately 600 metres, is Milford Railway Station. Robber School is located to the south-west of the site, just here. Milford Hospital's just over here. This is Station Road, Church Road and Portsmouth Road, and Godleming's up this area. As part of Local Plan Part One, the eastern part of the site has been removed from the Green Belt and shown on this map, taken from policy RE2 of the Local Plan Part One. So as Elizabeth referred to it, it's now demonstrated as white land within the boundary of Milford. There is a portion of the site to the east, which still remains within the Green Belt, but this area of the site is not proposed for residential development and instead would form part of the associated SANG area for the site. The application site has been adopted as a strategic housing policy under policy SS6 of the Local Plan Part One for around 180 dwellings. As such, the site in question has been removed from the Green Belt and allocated for a housing development. Therefore, the principal development has been established, and the site forms an extension to the settlement of Milford. Parts A to D of policy SS6 apply in regard to this development, sorry, and they concern that development be focused to the part of the site with the lowest risk of flooding, detailed access arrangements to serve the development are achieved, sustainable transport measures are included, and the provision of a landscape corridor along Station Lane and to the south of the site are met. The next few slides just leave some photos of the site. So here we have some photographs moving south along Station Lane, moving this way. You can see the existing entrance by footway to the site for the Golf Club. This is a bit further down, and even further down, and the site access is around this area, just here. These are site photographs moving north along Station Lane, so towards the settlement of And these are some photographs taken within the site, so from the north-west, looking across the site, the south-west, looking across the site, the north-east, across the site, and the south-east, looking across the site. As you can see, it's landscaped to the Golf Course currently. This is a photograph taken from in the wooded area to the north of the site, looking west. And these are just some photographs taken from surrounding development, looking into the site. The red boxes highlight the vegetation boundary, which would form parts of the SANG. So the map on the left shows the areas of flood zones two and three. So the darker is flood zone three, and this is flood zone two. The white area is flood zone one. The site was subject of a strategic flood risk assessment as part of Local Plan Part One allocation, which sequentially tested the site at strategic level. The application has been supported by a site-specific flood risk assessment, which sequentially directs development to take place within the areas of the site which fall within flood zone one. Members can have confidence that the development can be contained within areas with low risk of flooding on the site, and that development would not give rise to a material increase of flooding both on and off the site. The map to the right shows the existing tree cover of the site. Whilst this is outline permission, regard has been given to the likely impact of trees of any proposed development. Regard is given to the location of the non-residential development within the areas to the north and west of the site, which attain the most tree cover currently, and the landscape buffers to the south and east of the site boundaries, which will retain a sufficient amount of trees, a significant amount of the existing trees on the site. The landscape and tree officer is satisfied with the outline proposal, subject to the inclusion of conditions. So this is the illustrative layout. This shows a scheme for up to 200 dwellings located on the south-eastern part of the site. If you look to the map to the right, you can see the outline of the perimeter of the developed area, which sits outside of the flood zones, directed here, and outside of the landscape of the trees currently on the site. The SANG, which is this part here, is located to the north of the site, and the site access can be seen here. So this is Station Lane, running to the eastern boundary of the site. This shows the housing mix and affordable housing. The development provides for up to 200 dwellings with 60 affordable units proposed as part of this number. This equates to 30% affordable housing provision with the 70/30 split between affordable rent and shared ownership. The scheme is Schmar compliant. The site falls within close proximity to the Wildon Heath One Special Protection Area. This slide shows the location of the onsite SANG, which has been agreed with Natural England and will be secured through a section 106 if permission is granted. Natural England, as the statutory consultee on this matter, are satisfied that the SANG is compliant and that it is sufficient to mitigate the potential harm to the nearby SPA. This application has been appropriately assessed, which has been considered and agreed by Natural England. Officers are satisfied that the appropriate assessment is lawful. The appropriate assessment has been prepared in order to comply with the Sweetman case and Natural England acting in their capacity as the relevant statutory authority... nature conservation body, sorry. ...and have confirmed that they agree with the officer's conclusion that the development won't have an adverse impact on the SPA. It should be noted that a SANG is considered water-compatible development, as detailed within the technical guidance to the MPPF, and therefore appropriate as development within flood zone three. This slide shows an indicative layout of the leap and lap proposed for the site within a central area with a larger area of open green space to the north of the leap. There are also contributions sought for off-site play spaces and sports pitches. This slide also shows the proposed landscape buffers, which, again, are an issue for reserve matters, but this does give confidence that they can be provided. This slide shows the proposal for a new vehicle access from Station Road onto the site. This would be a priority junction on Station Road on a raised table. The junction would have footways either side and crossing points. The County Highway Authority have confirmed that the site entrance is compliant and benefits from adequate visibility slays and widths. This slide shows an indicative layout for parking for the site. The site would be capable of providing sufficient onsite private and visitor parking. This will be secured in detail at reserve matter stage. Car club, cycle parking and electric vehicle charging points are also to be secured by condition and further detail provided at reserve matters stage. I will now pass over to Richard from the County Highways Authority to run through the off-site highway improvements.
Thank you, Jessica, and evening, members. There's quite an extensive amount of off-site highway works proposed, so I'll just give you a summary of what's being proposed. And I'll start to the north of the site on Station Road, where we've got the junction with Church... oh, sorry. We've got the junction with Church Road and the Portsmouth Road mini roundabout. The main things to point out here is improvements to pedestrian crossing provision. We've got a new crossing here with a pedestrian refuge, particularly to help people get across to the bus stops going towards Godleming, the bus services going towards Godleming. Looking here, we've got changes to effectively how the junction's marked out to increase the amount of stacking space. By that I mean the amount of dedicated lane for left and turners and straight ahead. On this arm, we're formalising a crossing. There's no crossing there at the moment, again with tactile paving, the refuge in the middle, and the existing refuge is being altered to provide improved left, so straight ahead and right turn on this arm. In capacity terms, the main impact this development has is, as you'd expect, at the Station Lane junction with Church Road. Here, at the moment, you can only really get space at the junction for left and right turners, sort of one, two cars back at most. So what basically we've got here, we're taking out... The footways adjacent to the public car park here is very wide, so we can reduce that in width, but still retain the two metres. We can take some of the footway away to provide dedicated left-right turn stacking all the way back to the car park entrance here. And here we've got a yellow box to keep the access to the car park clear as well. And then coming round to Church Road, going towards Portsmouth Road, we've got an existing... There's an existing crossing, uncontrolled crossing here, that was done a few years ago with a sort of curb build-out to reduce the crossing width. But we really need to, as part of the sort of safety improvements, give pedestrians a bit more priority there, and the most common way of doing that is putting that on a raised table. So as you approach the sort of parade of shops and the activity here, this is both designed to give pedestrians protection and also to reduce speeds. So working south from there, so there's the yellow box. The first junction we come to is the residential road called Springwood. We've got improved crossing provision there. We've got widening of that bit of footway after Springwood to two metres. There is then a stretch of about 25 metres along the boundary of this property, which is a sort of brick wall, where we can't do any widening, but the width there is between one and 1.3 metres. So it's... But obviously, either side of that sort of narrow stretch, we've got wider areas for people to wait, particularly those people with buggies, you know, who are needing more space. So if they've got someone walking along, they can safely wait. And then the main feature here, really, we've obviously had to deal with the pinch point over and around, not just on the bridge itself, but approaching it. And the engineering solution to that is a priority give-way arrangement. So we've got a give-way line here, or one end of it here, and you can see the other end there. The priority will be given to traffic coming south, so cars coming into Milford on this end will be required to give way. By doing that, we can provide a two-metre width footway across the bridge, and then that continues down to the existing Golf Club vehicle access. And as you come across the river, we've got a crossing point here that will be on a raised table, that's for people to get to the SANG. And just point out that this is the first set of raised speed humps that we've got all the way down to Rake Lane, and this is to help facilitate the reduction in the speed limit on Station Lane from 40 to 30. The police have advised that they'll only support a reduction in the speed limit if physical enforcement measures, as in physical measures to reduce speeds, are provided. So coming down, that's a continuation of the last slide. The first sort of formal zebra crossing is here, and that's to get people from the new two-metre footway into the site. So the Golf Club access is here. And the strategy we've taken is that a three-metre width pedestrian cycleway will then follow the eastern boundary of the site all the way down its full length, and it will pass the site access, so it will cross the site access, and this will be set back from the road. So it won't be a traditional footway next to the road, it will be set back. And although the detailed layout isn't for consideration tonight, I've recommended a condition that the details of that route are provided at the reserve matter stage, and that that route is in accordance with... in terms of overlooking, lighting, et cetera, so that it's safe to use and the people actually want to use it. So that continues past the site access, and then we basically get to the south-eastern boundary of the site, so right here, and we've got a new crossing point. The carriageway is being widened to enable a pedestrian refuge. Just to point to note, the... Just to point to note, the engineering drawing says that will be 1.5 metres wide. I've actually had some correspondence with councillor Townsend, and we've agreed, we think that needs to be at least a minimum of two metres, particularly with a lot of the schoolchildren going down towards Rodborough College. 1.5 is the minimum requirement the DFT sets out, but two metres can be achieved here, we've got the space and there's no reason, and I think that can be secured by an informative, if committee decide to grant tonight, advising that when the developers' engineers submit the detailed design to the Highway Authority for approval, that that refuge there must be, have a two-metre width. So going south from, from, from that point, we've then got this section basically between the southern, south-eastern boundary of the site and just to the north of Rake Lane, where the footway is about a metre wide. It's got a brick wall, bounded by a brick wall, and then, and that's the extent of the public highway. All the land to the east of the brick wall is, is not public highway, and it is not part of this application. However, as Elizabeth pointed out, the Highway Authority considers to maximise the sustainable transport opportunities. Improvements should be made to that footway, and the applicant should work with the golf club to deliver those improvements, and a condition has been recommended on your update sheets to secure that detail at the Reserve Matters stage. As we come down Rake, to Rake Lane then, you may remember, members who were at the committee for Milford Hospital a few years ago, that key, key part of that mitigation was a, what we call a virtual footway down Rake Lane, to get the children, improve the route for the children down to Rodborough College. That's been very successful, and the head teacher, who I've, who I've met, has, has said that that has, has, has worked. But the key weak point was that there was no safe crossing point on, on Rake Lane. Here, actually, this is, must be a previous version of the drawing, actually, but what we, so what we're proposing in this location is, as you come up the footway here, there'll be a zebra crossing across Rake Lane, and that'll allow you to back, to get to the, for the children particularly, there's about 40 to 50 schoolchildren do this route in the morning and the afternoon to the station. And this will be the start of our 30 mile an hour zone, effectively, so we're, we're bringing the 30 all the way down to the, just, just the approach to Rake Lane, and that will be enforced by regular, as I say, speed cushions, and then as soon as you get up towards the site, we've got the, the raised table for the site access, and then the priority giveaway over the bridge. So I hope that is useful, and just in addition to the off-site, these off-site highway works that would be delivered by the developer in a league, under a legal agreement with the Highway Authority, we've also got contributions to actually deliver the reduction in the speed limit, which requires a, a traffic regulation order under separate statutory, and that pays for the processing of that. £60,000 to finish off the Rake Lane route, that, that there were some elements that weren't delivered as part, part of previous work. That will also improve some, prior to some lighting improvements on Rake Lane where there are some dark spots. And also put the crossing where, where the children come up at the moment, the virtual footway's on this side, and then they have to cross over to get to the formal footway on this side. We think it'd be benefit to put that crossing on a, or the whole junction on a raised table to give pedestrians more protection, and again, to reduce speeds. At the Portsmouth Road is the nearest frequent bus service. We've got £45,000, which the county council would use to put new bus stops, shelters, real-time information in. And then finally, a £20,000 contribution for some improvements that have been proposed as part of the Godalming-Gilford Greenway cycle route improvement scheme, and that would be focused on, on using it around that Portsmouth Road approach to the mini roundabout. So I hope that members find it helpful. Obviously, I'm here to answer any other questions during the debate tonight.
Thank you, Richard. So just to conclude, this slide gives members the matters for technical and principal opinions and the matters for judgment. To conclude, officers consider that the proposal would provide dwellings in a sustainable location and would deliver 30% affordable housing to contribute towards housing needs in the borough. Delivery of affordable housing and market homes in the context and constraints that apply to the borough would comprise the most significant social benefit to the proposed development and would be consistent with the MPPF's basic imperative of delivery of homes. The proposal would also deliver economic gains from sources including construction-based employment and contributions more generally to the economy through activity and spending of the future occupiers of the site. Officers consider that the scheme would function well within the context of the surrounding area, the potential for landscaping and provision of public open space where none currently exists, and other beneficial considerations to which weight can be attached. Having regard to the expert opinion of the County Highway Authority, officers are satisfied that the proposed development could be accessed in a safe manner and that, subject to securing highways improvements, the scheme could be provided without prejudice to the highway safety or capacity of the local area. The proposal has demonstrated, subject to control by way of planning conditions, if permission were to be granted, that in terms of flood risk, the development would be safe for its lifetime, taking into account its uses without increasing flood risk elsewhere. Further, and subject to the same control by way of planning conditions, the proposal would not result in any ecology, archaeology or air quality concerns. Officers are satisfied that, subject to the specific onsite sang provision outlined in this presentation and the agenda report, that there would be sufficient mitigation to avoid the risk of adverse effects on the nearby SPA. The site has been removed from the green belt and allocated as a strategic site in the local plan part one, and it is recognised that it is suitable for development and that the development of the site will make an important contribution to meeting the borough's housing needs. The proposal would be compliant with the housing mix indicated by the SMMAR. Officers considered that the proposal would deliver an appropriate profile of homes to serve the community. I will now pass to Patrick, who is going to run through the update sheet and recommendation.
Thank you, Jess. Good evening, Chair, good evening, members. I'm just going to run through this quite quickly in part because I think a lot of the issues are already being picked up by both Jess and Richard, but just, just for clarification, on page 13, the education contributions will be towards the Weverley Federation rather than specifically Broadwater School. Page 45, I mean, this relates to the link to the north west.
Excuse me, Patrick, I think you've got different numbering to, to us. We certainly haven't got a page 45 here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry, I'm only, I'm talking about, sorry, the headings where it relates to the changes. It's page one, but it relates to the change within page 45 of the main report, sorry for the confusion. Basically, this clarifies that a link to the north and west of the site will, will be sought to be provided prior to, to be addressed prior to the reserve matters being submitted, as will a pedestrian linkage to the station as well, and those will be conditioned, which is provided later in, in the report. The highway works will be covered by Section 278, which Richard has brought up. The wet spot on Station Road is raised as an issue. Again, this issue is with, on the golf course, and again, this is being addressed, and through the two sections, Section 278 works will look at the drainage along Station Road, but also the Highway Authority is in discussion with the golf club in relation to this. Again, the Station Lane to the south, the improvement works to be improved or set out there, but again, Richard has discussed those in more detail. The habitat regulations clarification, again, Jessica has, has touched on that. Natural England have been consulted and have raised no objections. The IAA screening is provided as in Annex One, and the responses from the main consultees, again, in summary, Natural England had been consulted, they have raised, agreed the conclusions to the draft, appropriate assessments, queries from members. Again, there's clarification in the, of the sang area. It's clarification that nothing's to be built within flood zone three or flood zone two. This clarification to confirm the IAA had been consulted and the consideration of runoff, and they are happy with that, and that's to be conditioned. And again, the, the issue of whether or not the inspector inserted the site, it wasn't a strategic housing site, already within the local plan, that the examiner considered and concluded was appropriate, and removed, removed the green belt clarification as, classification as Jess has pointed out. The Environment Agency, again, under condition four, the Environment Agency have confirmed that they are satisfied with that condition and will review the, the detail as when presented. Again, the queries from Wicklow Parish Council relate to flood risk, which has been covered. Treatment of foul sewage, there's a question about cumulative impacts, Thames Water have confirmed that they have looked at this and are satisfied that this is satisfactory and don't want, want to withdraw their initial comments. The issue around the sang, again, this has, has been looked at, and the question of the, the boardwalk, whether this be hired, again, Natural England have, have confirmed that they are satisfied with the sang, and the detail of which we will obviously look, look at when we get the Reserve Matters application. Traffic congestion, again, Richard has touched, touched on and, and confirmed that they are satisfied with the impacts. Education contribution, we've touched on. The SIL in Section 110 contribution, there's clarification of what the SIL contribution would be. And there's also clarification that the restrictive covenant is not a material planning consideration at this time, but has been considered through the local plan review and deemed acceptable by the inspector. There are additional queries raised by CPRE, again, and these relate to issues around the Environment Agency, et cetera, and they have clarified their satisfaction with it. I don't feel the need to go into that in more detail at this point, but obviously we'll answer questions on that if they arise. And I think, and then it sort of outlines the changes to the conditions, and unless you want me to go through those in detail, they're sort of set out, set out there for you, unless anybody wants me to. Okay? If you're happy with that, then I can move on to the recommendation. You okay? Shall I move to recommendation?
Were you going to address councillor Hyman's legal query from this afternoon as part of an update? I, I understood there was to be a verbal update.
Yeah.
I, I think we felt, Chairman, that, that Jess had covered that off in her presentation. She was actually reading from, from the response and giving that, but we can rehearse that again if you'd like us to.
Hyman, are you happy, you obviously wouldn't be happy with the response, but are you satisfied that your query has been addressed?
No, not at all, Chairman. I mean, I put forward questions which were very, very simple, audit trail that we have to go through, effectively, of do you accept that this is the law and that we're not addressing it? And, and the Sweetman judgment said that, you know, the approach that's been taken for the past 10 years is not lawful, that the ruling's there, we don't have to take anyone to court because the ruling's there, Chairman. And, you know, it's a simple question, have we got the burden numbers in the, in the IAA? No, we haven't got an IAA, we have to refuse consent. It's very simple, and unless someone can actually admit that's the case, no one's admitted it for 10 years, I don't expect anyone to, to, to start now, but.
Thank you, thank you. Elizabeth, would you, would you like to rehearse what was said earlier then, please?
Sir Chairman, I can confirm that we circulated our response to all members before the meeting. Can I just ask members if you did have a chance to see that? No. But in, in essence, and having regard to the legal advice, we have confirmed, greatest respect to councillor Hyman, we do believe that the approach that we've taken is sound and appropriate, Natural England haven't objected, it is consistent with the approach that we've been advising you on over the last months since Sweetman, and we're confident that we've, we've addressed this in the correct and lawful way. So I hope that that is helpful, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Just to recommend, the recommendation, recommendation A, subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement within six months of the date of the committee resolution to grant planning permission to secure the provision of contributions towards 30% affordable housing and affordable housing mix, education infrastructure, sods, management maintenance, public open space and play space provision and maintenance, highways improvements, environmental improvements contribution, travel plan, car club, leisure and green space areas, environmental enhancements, waste and recycling facilities, and provision and maintenance of an onsite sang, subject to conditions and informatives, online permission should be granted. Alternatively, recommendation B, that if requirements of recommendation A are not met, permission to be refused. Recommendation C, that if a formal planning decision to, in respect of recommendation A is issued on the 1st of the 3rd, 2019 or thereafter, then the head of planning be authorised to change SIL, charge SIL in accordance with the council's approved SIL charging schedule, as I pointed out earlier, and revise Section 106 infrastructure payments.
Thank you. Were we going to add the additional informative that Richard mentioned earlier of the two-metre island in the south-east corner? So that would be informative 16 when we come to that recommendation. Thank you. Now, members, this application, as you might expect, is subject to public speaking, and I would first invite Tim House to speak on behalf of the objectors. Good evening, Mr. House. I understand the procedure has been explained to you, and you have four minutes from when you start speaking. Thank you.
Good evening, councillors. I'll make four main points. The starting point is this is a deeply unpopular choice locally for a large-scale development. The local survey in 2017 showed that of the options available, it ranked very low. The rate of objection to support in neighbours' responses is nearly 101. Parish council opposes it as do other local interest groups. This should be influential on elected local representatives. The second point is that the planned development's far too big. The roads can't support it, the sang is contrived, the FRA is critically flawed, it offers miserable provision for outside play areas, it will impose an unsustainable burden on an overstretched local services and amenities. The third point is that the reality of the proposition on the ground has been buried in the detail of the paper. This is a scheme that most statutory consultees have opposed. They've been persuaded to retreat from that position by intensive lobbying and resorted instead to imposing a long list of uncoordinated conditions. It's impossible to know if those conditions can be met and coexist. In practice, the resulting cocktail of conditions will be a nightmare to police. Councillors should be more realistic than the officers. The reality is this is a commercially inspired scheme to cram up to 200 houses onto a flood plain with a sole access point onto a narrow, already congested, poorly maintained, dangerous country lane. The footpath to the station is narrow and prone to flooding, there's no plan to widen it along its full length because the developer can't, it doesn't own the land and the road is too narrow. As the impractical shuttle system at the bridge over the River Och shows, any gain in pedestrian safety is at the cost of even greater traffic congestion. There's no footpath at all for children walking to Rodborough School, their walk is along an even narrower, unlit lane, which will become a rat-run for traffic avoiding the bottleneck in Milford. The traffic mitigation plan will exacerbate that bottleneck. The absence of amenity on the site and the inability of local services to sustain the new population will increase traffic volume, as will Dunstfold Park and Iron Hills, neither of which have been taken into account in the traffic assessment. The fourth point concerns the officer's report, which emphasises the inclusion of the site in the local plan part one, and the pressing need to meet a five-year supply target. That raises three points. First, this site will never deliver anything approaching 175 houses in five years. There's a restrictive covenant preventing that. The closest analogous legal The closest analogous legal challenge to such a covenant took over five years to resolve. The developer lost in an important Court of Appeal decision last year. Second, L P P one did not involve any proper comparative analysis of alternative sites. The fatal flaw in this planning application is that no consideration has been given to the availability of suitable alternative sites where a development of this scale could cause less harm. The officer's report has overlooked this entirely. Third, L P P one is subject to an ongoing unresolved legal challenge. There's no longer any clarity at all that a development of this size is required in Milford in order to meet the objectively obsessed need in the borough. A decision to approve this application would be objectionable on multiple technical grounds, but it would also be an affront to common sense and responsible local administration. It'll fly in the face of overwhelming public opinion, it'll be contrary to the public interest, and it'll be futile. A far more rational outcome would be to refuse it until the L P P two is complete and then reconsider any revised proposal in the light of a full understanding of available alternatives and a proper, up to date assessment of the housing need.
Thank you, Mr House. Now invite councillor Gillian McCalden from Whitley Parish Council. Good evening, councillor.
Thank you. Good evening, councillors. My name is Gillian McCalden. I am Chair of Whitley Parish Council and on the Whitley Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group. I'm here to ask you to reject this application. To be clear, we are not opposed to house building. We understand that new homes are needed and we are happy to take our share. But this is not the right place for 200 houses. There are far better sites elsewhere in the parish and it is not clear to us that the infrastructure needed to support homes on this site can actually be provided, despite what the statutory bodies are saying. My message to you tonight is just because the statutory bodies say it's going to be fine, doesn't mean that it will be fine. The most glaring example of this is Surrey Highways' assertion that there will not be severe traffic congestion. As people who live there, we know that there is already traffic congestion at peak times. This can only get worse when more houses are built here and elsewhere in the borough. The Station Lane Church Road junction will be an accident waiting to happen. Moving on to Thames Water and Sewers. On the 20th of December, Thames Water told officers that the existing far water network could not accommodate the needs of this development. Just three weeks later, they told the applicant's consultants that there would be capacity so long as the homes were occupied in a phased manner. There has been no explanation for this revised view. The Lead Local Flood Authority initially objected to this application. They were concerned about the runoff rates, particularly as part of the site is in flood zone three. However, after discussion with the applicant's consultant, they withdrew their objection on condition that significant evidence and detailed plans are provided before the development can commence. The Environment Agency also objected initially. They said that the flood risk assessment was inadequate. However, after discussion with officers, they withdrew their objection on condition that a full flood risk assessment is submitted at the reserve matters stage. In both these cases, it would seem appropriate to us that the assessment should be completed before outline planning permission is granted. We would like to know now that there is no risk of flooding, not at some later stage. And finally, sang. The purpose of a sang is to provide a place where residents will want to walk their dogs so they do not use the S P A. The sang that's proposed here includes 1.8 kilometres of raised enclosed boardwalk above boggy ground and it requires walkers to cross the road twice. Although Natural England have approved the design, ignoring their own guidelines, it is not somewhere we would choose to walk our dogs. So Surrey Highways are saying there won't be severe congestion when we can see with our own eyes that there already is. Thames Water are saying that there will be sufficient sewer capacity, but that contradicts their earlier statement that there wouldn't be. The Lead Local Flood Authority and the Environment Agency are both concerned about flooding, but have been persuaded not to object at this stage. And Natural England have agreed a nonsensical, non-compliant sang. Just because the statutory bodies say it's going to be fine, doesn't mean that it will be fine. The officers may be satisfied, but we are not. Please reject this application.
Thank you, councillor. Now invite Sean Taylor, the agent, to speak on behalf of the application. Good evening, Mr Taylor.
Thank you, chairman, good evening all. The application before you this evening seeks outline planning permission for up to 200 dwellings with access in detail. All other matters, including design, layout and appearance, are matters that will be subject to a future reserve matters planning application. This application would deliver up to 200 houses on a key strategic site allocated for housing in the recently adopted local plan. The proposals make provision for 30% affordable housing, equating to 60 homes that would be pepper potted within the scheme, the provision of onsite sangs and a considerable package of Section 106 contributions. These contributions are varied and provide benefits to the local community, including the provision of bus stops, works to the local scout hut, play equipment, the provision of 3G sports pitches at Rodborough School, maintenance works to Burton Pavilion, Milford Village Hall and other village halls in the parish. The committee should be aware the Section 106 agreement is at a very advanced stage. All fundamental requirements, including these financial contributions, have been agreed and the Section 106 is capable of being finalized over the next few days. The applicant accepts there has been local objection to these proposals, including the parish council. However, the applicant has amended the scheme further to public consultation and ongoing discussions with the parish council and others. Such amendments include the repositioning of the site access and a comprehensive package of highways improvements to Station Lane, which include crossing points, raised tables, footpath widening and a shuttle scheme at the bridge. Those objections that have been raised concerning density, layout and overall design are matters to be addressed by a future reserve matters planning application. However, the proposals before you this evening clearly demonstrate that up to 200 two storey houses can be accommodated within this site. Whilst this is an outline planning application, there is considerable detail that sits behind the proposals, which includes a clear parking strategy that meets the requirements of Waverley Borough and includes the provision of electric charging points. Roads within the site are appropriate width to accommodate large refuse vehicles and the day to day traffic associated with residential development. The applicant understands that residents have raised technical concerns regarding highways, drainage and matters relating to sang provision. The applicant has provided very comprehensive evidence to support the approach that has been adopted with all of these matters and importantly, the relevant experts from Surrey County Council, the Environment Agency and Natural England have been satisfied with the evidence that has been put forward. In some instances, statutory bodies have imposed planning conditions and this is quite normal for outline planning applications and these are matters that will be addressed at the detailed stage as part of the reserve matters planning application, at which point statutory consultees will be asked by Waverley Council to comment on the details put forward. In summary, the level of development proposed can be accommodated within this site whilst complying with all relevant policy requirements of Waverley Borough Council, Surrey County Council and other statutory consultees. This is a policy compliant proposal that will make a very valuable contribution towards housing delivery in the borough, both in terms of market and affordable housing, and will provide significant local benefits as part of wide range in Section 106 package that has been agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Taylor. And now invite councillor Upton, the ward councillor, to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Being the other ward councillor of this borough, with this ward under my wing and not being able to attend as a fellow member of the committee, firstly, may I say, together with the residents of the ward that I've met, we need the appreciation, we have appreciated the increase needed for housing stock, particularly mixed housing stock in some form. But restraint for the particular development situated in the village, in what is only the country, it is being constructed in a country lane that's not only used by Milford, it's also used by other villages to access the station, such as Elsted. During my time as ward councillor, meeting the residents and more particularly the parish council, I became greatly impressed with the enthusiastic way with which in the effort they put to their local plan, identifying sites suitable for larger development. But the best of these have been ignored and here we are faced with a current application as one of the current answers, attracting the greatest number of complaints and objections experienced. I do not blame the officers for supporting the application by doing their job, but in the passage of time, they will have gone to past as new as most of their colleagues, leaving behind a trail of unsatisfied and frustrated villagers. In my personal view, we must ask our officers to be perhaps more acutely aware of their local views and be able to take control of the numbers of the outside agencies that would like to propose for any site. This is probably one of the worst scenarios to be considered and obvious case of overdevelopment and should be sent back. As you are no doubt aware, I do not favor the current size of the current application and the members of the planning committee, I urge you to use your best reasoned argument to reject it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Upton. You will have an opportunity to come back at the end of the debate if you so desire.
Thank you for not having used all my time. I would expect that.
Members, before we start the debate, would any of you like to address questions to the officers that can be answered and then we can go on to the time debate? Councillor Follows.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just go through the specific questions and I'll leave the debate bits to in a minute. For Surrey Highways, does this factor in the increased traffic from other developments in the ward, e.g. Oxford Park, just approved down the road in my own ward? Regarding the physical enforcement measures, they look like the sort that a four by four or a lorry could easily just drive straight over with no impedance. And I just wonder if you could just comment on that very briefly? This is more just my own education, but also because I think it might be material. Could officers just briefly explain to me what they believe a sang is actually for? So that I can just make the judgment to myself whether this is actually meeting what that is for? And finally, could you just also describe what a car club actually entails as well and what benefit that is? Because we've had it on a few applications and I'm just curious. The very final one, before I let somebody else talk on questions, in regards to councillor Hyman's question, just a very, very, very quick one, the bird numbers question. Do we have to do that kind of assessment? Do we have to count birds? Is it something that we have done or have not? And is that an issue? Just a very clear yes or no one on the same subject. Thank you.
Thank you, officers.
Thank you, councillor Follows. I'll cover off the highway questions. So as required under government policy, the assessment has undertaken a future year baseline of 2024, which is five years post development, submission of the application. And that means that the committed developments in the area, so including Oxford Park, all the way down to, including Dunstfold, have been included in that growth. So the mitigation that's been proposed at the, particularly at the church, Station Lane Church Road, has taken into account that additional traffic. The design of the highway works will be subject to the county council standard engineering and safety audit checks. What we're proposing here is standard that are used on all roads of this nature in Surrey. Obviously, we've got some HGV traffic on Station Lane, particularly going to Tewesley Lane. So the, one of the things, for example, will be widening the carriageway to do the shuttle work in priority way, that we've got the sweat path analysis. But I've looked at the available, the widths that we've got and we've got the space, but the actual detail is at the detailed design stage. In terms of the car club, just to clarify, because as you write saying, that's been something we're putting on quite a lot of the applications recently. So basically, I just read from the definition of the Surrey County Council's draft at the moment, guidance on car clubs in new developments, which should be coming through once it's been approved by our cabinet. A car club provides cars for short term hire on a pay per trip basis. It allows individuals and businesses affordable access to a vehicle without the need for car ownership. So effectively, on this site, we would have two car club cars. As part of the package, the 106 requirement is that the developer pays for the first year of membership of that car club scheme, which is normally, well, the price varies, and also that they get, I think it's £25 towards their mileage, you know, of the mileage they have to pay for normally. So effectively, it's really connected to the travel plan. The travel plan's main role is to, over a five year period, reduce the number of sole occupancy car trips by 10%. And the car club is just one of the measures used to obviously achieve that target. So I hope that clarifies. So it's not, I think I did read a couple of resident representations about the car club sharing cars, but it's not that.
I'm sorry, can I ask a very quick follow up on that? Is there evidence of that actually working in any other development and does that actually achieve that aim of reducing the journeys?
So the data's still pretty scarce because it's only, we've only been doing it a couple of years, but in Guildford, where we've been doing it the longest, we've had a good take up. And we've had a couple of sites now where certainly the targets in the travel plan are being met. Obviously, each site is different, but the evidence so far is that people, particularly younger people, don't want to or can't afford their own car, are using it as a way, a means of getting to places by utilizing the car club scheme. So that's the evidence that we've received so far.
Thank you, Richard. Elizabeth.
Thank you, chairman. I'll pick up the questions councillor Follows raised in respect of the S P A and the sang issues. Put very simply, the purpose of a sang is to provide alternative green space to pick up the recreational pressure that otherwise is identified as potentially being led to the special protection area and therefore it is intended to avoid that impact on the S P A. So it's alternative green space and the detail of it, the applicants propose and we clearly share with Natural England because they have certain criteria that they need to be in place for their view to be satisfied that it is effective sang. You asked the question about whether you need to have available information about the bird numbers. At this point in time, the accepted procedure is that the applicant's proposal to provide sang as a mechanism to avoid that impact is sufficient for you to make a lawful, sound judgment. And Natural England as the conservation body and the advisor is satisfied that if the sang is in place, that that diversion of activity will be acceptable and that you can make a sound judgment on that basis. Does that help?
Very quick follow up again. So if I destroyed some, sorry, if I built on some land that contained some rare birds, but then put some sang in that didn't have those rare birds, I'd be compliant with the law?
Sorry, chairman. If you were to build on land and destroy the birds, you'd breach of the habitats regulations by definition regardless of sang. So I recommend you didn't actually do that. But no, sang is an effective means of avoiding that impact. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Goodrich, you had a question?
Two questions, Mr Chairman. On page 32 of our papers, in the paragraph lawful development of the site, in the middle paragraph, it talks about claimants sought permission to judicially review a decision on part one. Could I just have confirmation who the claimants are in that context and what the six grounds relating to Milford Golf Course were? I know the general ones, but the six presumably specific points raised on the Milford Golf Course. And the second question I have is relating to the additional. And the second question I have is relating to the additional papers before us today, page two, halfway down, it talks about the highway authorities confirmed they're also aware of wet spots, i.e. euphemism presumably for flooding, and that they're in discussions with the golf club. Bearing in mind the golf club and the applicant are different entities, is there anything, I would ask the officers, is there anything that we can put in by way of condition to give strength to the arm of the highway authority to try and ensure that this is resolved before the detailed reserve matter stage?
Thank you. Officers.
I think, like we've put on the informative about the, I think that would be a very, very good idea, because although it's obviously we're pursuing that matter separately, any weight that we can get towards that would be very helpful.
Elizabeth, would you like to address the judicial review question?
Very happy to, chairman. I wonder whether Lewis wants to pick that up as our lawyer. We may not have all the grounds necessary to hand, but he may do. Thank you.
No, unfortunately, I don't have all that information to hand. Obviously, as you said, the key point to take away was that they were challenging policy SS6 and the allocation of Milford Golf Club as an allocation in the local plan. The primary basis of their challenge was the existence of the restrictive covenant, and the fact that, as claimed, the site couldn't be delivered essentially to ensure that the strategy the council was relying on was a sound one. But although I don't have all of that information to hand, I can assure you that it really shouldn't be a consideration for members tonight. Obviously, if you are interested, I can provide that information after the committee. But with all due respect, it shouldn't be relevant to the matter tonight. Thank you, chairman.
Just to come back, I understand that the restrictive, it makes it clear there were six grounds and a restrictive covenant. Now, I understand the situation over a restrictive covenant and what the consequences could be, but I assume that there were six grounds in addition to the restrictive covenant, and I appreciate I should have asked beforehand and haven't, but I'm welcome to receive that afterwards in case it is relevant. Thank you.
Councillor Follows, you wish to come back?
Yeah, sorry, one more question on some of the legal matters as well. And this is mostly because I've only schemered the changes to the MPPF that came out yesterday. So if we have to demonstrate this extra land supply for five years, is it actually material that there seems to be quite a lot of legal challenge to the actual use of the site for building? Because if we pass it and it's never built, does that issue now not become material because of the changes to the MPPF just recently?
Thank you, chairman. I think it's really important, and one of the reasons I raised it right at the beginning, that you do differentiate between the consideration of the legal challenge at plan allocation stage and now at planning application stage. Generally speaking, as you're aware, as experienced planning committee members, covenants on the land are not material planning considerations. You would not be taking those into account in your deliberations as a planning committee. But in respect of local plan preparation, where deliverability of sites that have been allocated is a significant factor, where it was raised, the inspector had to have due regard to whether or not it would render the plan allocation undeliverable. So in a plan-making context, it was potentially relevant, whereas in a planning application context, it is not. So it went through the process of being considered as a potential constraint on the site allocation during the local plan examination. You'll have all read the inspector's report, the inspector addressed it, and it was not found to be an obstacle to prevent allocating this site in the plan. So the plan was found sound, the plan has been adopted, the allocation is valid and sound, and conform the basis of your consideration. For purposes of the planning application, it may still be something which the developer has to overcome in seeking to build out his planning permission, but it is not a material planning consideration before you in terms of deciding the application tonight. So I realise that's quite confusing, but I hope that helps members. Thank you.
Do you wish to come back briefly, please?
Yeah, very good. So the inspector is allowed to make a ruling in the local plan stage to basically say, effectively to evaluate the likelihood of a successful legal challenge. Is the inspector competent to make that choice, decision during it?
So, chairman, the decision that the inspector was making, as is before him in terms of assessing a submitted local plan and whether it is sound, one of those tests is whether the plan is deliverable. So a planning authority putting forward its proposed allocated sites to meet the housing requirement has got to be confident that those sites will come forward and be built out in the plan period, otherwise it's just a statement of words which doesn't have any substance to it. So it is at that point that a covenant potentially could be a constraint, if it could constrain development on the site in terms of deliverable allocation. But we had that debate, inspector took it into account, it was very well versed, and indeed, there was a challenge to the local plan on the basis of that argument. The challenge failed, the plan's adopted, the plan is sound, and that argument, for all intents and purposes, from our viewpoint as planning authority, I'm afraid has been spent, and as far as I'm concerned, is not relevant. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I've got a couple of questions. In the report, we're told that the scheme includes measures to enhance pedestrian environment along station lane, and it's a way of enhancing sustainable access to the railway station. It raises no concerns about the pedestrian's journey after they emerge from the south-west corner of the site, and county highways haven't commented on that, which suggests that there was no problem envisaged with the pedestrian route along station lane, and yet suddenly, late yesterday afternoon, we received the update, and it is considered necessary to provide a complete upgrade to two-metre width to mitigate the potential impacts of the scheme. And I'm just curious as to why this suddenly became an issue between Monday's site visit and chairman's briefing and yesterday afternoon?
Thank you, chairman. The report that was produced was accurate, and we would stand by the recommendation. In the view of officers and taking into account the expert view of the highway authority, the recommendation as it originally stood with the conditions was sufficient to render the application acceptable. Having said that, we try to be mindful of feedback and additional issues being raised, and one recurrent theme was an interest from several members, that notwithstanding the baseline position, that there could be an added aspiration for improved pedestrian and cycle links to be provided. So we're satisfied an additional condition meets the test of conditions, the applicant has agreed to the inclusion of the additional condition. It will mean there's further exploration required to provide those further links because of land outside their ownership. But we felt that, having regard to some of the feedback we were getting from members, that this would be helpful to you in terms of satisfying that additional aspiration for improved links. So it doesn't mean without them it's not acceptable, it just means with the applicant's endeavours, that you should end up with an even better position once that further condition is complied with. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just briefly, this is one for Richard, I think. The report says that the footway over the bridge will be widened to 1.5, but the update says two metres. I'm expecting you to say that two metres is correct. Thank you, Richard. Right, councillor Hyman, you had a question for the officers?
Yes, thank you. This is, of course, not a criticism of any officers, chairman, but I'm not entirely sure that the questions that were asked before that are sort of answered in the update sheet have been fully answered, as the person who asked might have expected. So on page five, there was a question about the, how high is the boardwalk going to have to be above ground level? I suppose that would be at the most you'd be asking, rather than at least. I don't think that's been answered. And then if you turn the page on to page six, it says that officers are satisfied the above concerns have been assessed by the competent authority on this matter. I just wonder if you can confirm actually where the competent authority? We haven't assessed it. We can't assess it because we don't have the information required by law, and I've quoted it before, but the Ruling Commission versus Greece says it cannot be held as an assessment is appropriate where information and reliable and updated data concerning the birds in that SPA are lacking. So unless we've got an assessment with that information, it's quite clear that ruling, that does apply to us. We must interpret the directive in that manner, that is the whole point of that ruling. And I don't know what part of that people don't seem to understand, frankly. So we don't have that appropriate assessment.
Is this a new question, councillor Hyman, or the same old one?
Well, we're saying this has been assessed by the competent authority, and I'd like to know.
I think you've asked that before, and earlier this evening, and you received the answer from the officers, so I don't think we want to keep going over the same ground. Elizabeth, sorry.
Chairman, just one point on that. We do apologise, councillor Hyman is actually right in that we are the competent authority, and we meant in that instance to say the statutory adviser, but other than that, the matter is absolutely accurate. So apologies as a slight confusion of terminology. Yes, we are the competent authority, you are the competent authority.
And do we know the height of the boardwalk?
Do we know the height of the boardwalk?
Chairman, while looking for that, my own question actually is in relation to the EIA, and that is, which is one for Lewis Jones, I think, perhaps, is whether we as the competent authority, we as members, can override the screening opinion which officers issued, because I believe that case law says that we can. Quite clearly, the criteria exceeded by this development, the 150 homes and the five hect Si's, or whatever it is, are exceeded, quite clearly. And there are issues we would want to have assessed properly. So can we override the officer's screening opinion lawfully? I think it was Champion, perhaps, that's the case that said that we can do that. So I'd like confirmation whether we can or not. It's a highly material question. Thank you.
Lewis, do you want some time before, shall we? Councillor Mullin, was yours a question, or did you wish to start the debate?
I had a question. I was not quite clear about the reference to an additional condition. If we look at the update sheet, the bottom of page one, land ownership consideration, and for the next paragraph in a bit, I think Elizabeth was addressing this. This is the vex question of trying to improve the eastern side of the roadway, or the footway, I should say, going from below the site towards the station. Is that correct? And it's made clear here that that would require using some land owned by the golf club, not owned by the applicant or the highways authority. Now, what I'm not clear about is, has a condition been drafted already to cover this? What number is it, and where is it?
Yeah, on page 10 of your update sheet, there's two additional conditions which address the linking both from the site outside of the site ownership towards the train station and within the site to other areas of developed land to the east. Page 10 of the update report? Or update sheet, sorry?
Right, so this one here, that's condition 20? Sorry, it doesn't have a condition number yet, just to be clear. So where is the text, please?
Bottom of page 10 of the update.
So at the bottom of page 10, you'll see there's condition reason, then there's condition. So the first condition relates to the additional pedestrian link that would relate to the north-west area, and then the second condition relates to that relating to the pedestrian link.
Now I know where it is. Just to ask for clarity, on the bottom of the first large paragraph on page two, the wording is, if the footpath widening cannot be secured, then an application to remove the condition will need to be made, satisfactory justification made at that time. So do I take it that what we're envisaging is we'll put this condition in, hope it can be satisfied, but if it can't be, because there's no agreement between the applicant and the landowner, the golf club, then they're entitled to come back and ask for it to be removed? Is that the position?
Well, the applicant can request removal of any condition as part of the process, as part of the planning process. But what we are simply saying is that we, as the planning authority, will look at that condition, obviously try and resist it, but we're just recognising that because it is a gramping condition and it is outside the land ownership, we recognise that there is that possibility, that it can't be delivered, but we would hope that the developer, they're very clear that they need to, and there were very clear messages that they do need to.
I'm just remembering what I had heard, I think, many years ago, that there was something fundamentally unreasonable about imposing a fundamentally impossible condition. Am I not right?
I think you're right. Conditions have to be reasonable and imposed in good faith, but I think the message we're giving is we recognise there is some risk, it might not be capable of being complied with, but not so fundamentally that it's unreasonable to impose it. And it has such a clear advantageous planning purpose, we feel that that is material enough to your decision to include it. It's open to you not to include it if you prefer to, but we would recommend it would be of benefit. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Do we have any answers for councillor Hyman?
Actually, in relation to the boardwalk and the height of it, because it is an outline application and reserve matters will look at the detail, then at that time, the detail on the boardwalk will come forward. So we don't have information at this time on the height of the boardwalk.
But we are being asked to grant consent to this in principle on the basis that the sang is deliverable and acceptable, without knowing whether it is, are we?
We are confident, one, that it is deliverable, and, two, we are confident that it will be satisfactory, given the boardwalk and the location of it. I mean, just to be clear, the majority of the sang is outside the flood zone three and to a greater extent two as well. I mean, there will be sections of the boardwalk granted through the flood plain, as there is in other sangs within this authority and other authorities that are deemed acceptable and usable. Obviously, we will work with the applicant, it's up to the applicant to demonstrate that it is usable at that time.
But do you not accept that Sweetman says we can't do that, that it has to be shown? I mean, what was the point of the Sweetman judgment? If it doesn't say Natural England are wrong, you know, the authorities that are using this sort of approach are wrong, it is unlawful. You know, when we haven't even got the bird numbers in there, we know that we're not satisfying these judgements. Perhaps if I can just shortcut this to the very end, chairman, if you don't mind, because you know where this leads to ultimately. I will feel insulted throughout the whole meeting, and I will be shut up throughout the whole meeting, and then we'll get to the end and I'll say, look, if we're refusing consent to this, we need to have the no appropriate assessment as being our strongest reason for refusal, because it is and it can't, no one can overturn that if we correctly refuse on those grounds. And then the officers will turn around and say, well, I would advise you strongly not to. And so my question really is why? Who's pulling the strings? Why are we not allowed to obey the law, chairman? And I'd like that answered.
Elizabeth?
Just before you speak, I'm not shutting you up, councillor Hyman. I'm asking the officers to address your questions. I am asking you to keep it short sometimes, and I'm asking you not to constantly repeat the same diatribe every meeting, but I'm not shutting you up.
Chairman, that was not a criticism of you in any way, chairman.
So, chairman, I think there were two outstanding questions. There's one, the height of the boardwalk, and apologies, it's not in the report. It was, we think, in the detail and before Natural England, so they will have taken that fully into account. I'm very happy that they have assessed it properly, and I advise that you take their advice into account. Notwithstanding that, in the time we've got left, we are doing our best to download that from our website document. If we've got that before the end of the debate, we'll pass that back to you, councillor Hyman. The other point I think you asked is whether or not, as a committee, you are placed to disagree with our conclusions on the screening opinion. You are the planning authority, and the screening opinion is the officer's view. Having said that, generally speaking, because of the technical nature of screening opinions, they would ordinarily be a delegated matter, because they are subject to technical advice. We're not experts as officers, we take our advice on the technical matters into account and make a decision in that way. Having said that, it wasn't, a request for a screening opinion wasn't made to us, so we've dealt with it all upfront and included it for you for your information. So, yes, technically, you could disagree with that, but this isn't a matter of judgment, this is a matter of applying the rules of the environmental impact assessment regulations. We've done that, and we've provided those conclusions for you, so I would recommend that you accept our advice, that this is not EIA development. I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend?
Thank you, chairman. Just a couple of questions. I'd like to thank Richard for discussing things.
discussing things with me today, sort of quite a few emails backward and forward. And I'm glad to see that you're going to include the informative for the pedestrian refuge should have a width of two metres. I just want to clarify whether or not that affects the running widths of the road, and whether or not that will still be a minimum of three metres either side of the refuge.
Yeah, I confirm that we've got the space available to maintain those minimum three-metre lanes.
Thank you. Another quick question was about the sang and the boardwalk, and I appreciate, I have read somewhere that it was, Natural England did take that into account. However, I also read that the boardwalk was going to have sides so that the dogs could not, if you had dogs, that they couldn't sort of trail off the boardwalk. And I just wanted clarification whether or not, when it went through to Natural England, that they were aware of these sides on the boardwalk. I know there's some areas at the bottom, east and west, where the dogs can wander off lead, but I just want clarification whether or not Natural England considered those sides, because that does rather limit the amount of exercise quite a bit, and it requires that area being kept clear at all times. Thank you.
So, chairman, I don't know off the top of my head whether they were conscious of the sides. If it is part of the management plan, they would have noted it and taken it into account. We're waiting to upload it. Maybe it's another point we can come back to, but I would just come back to the point that they have looked very carefully at it. And as far as they're concerned, they're satisfied it's suitable as sang, so that would include the detail that was before them. And I would imagine that is probably as good as we're going to get. But if we can get that point about the sides before the end of the meeting, we'll get that up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just two very quick ones. One was about the electrical charging. In your introduction, you said about the detail being provided at reserve matters. So the fact that before, we usually say quick charging and things like that, that doesn't apply in this case, or does it?
That will come under reserve matters.
Okay, thank you. And my last one was, under condition 21, which is the Leeds Local Flood Authority, again, very kindly, officers included in the update sheet at the bottom of page four, the information required as per condition four of the agenda report will require the Environment Agency to review as statutory consultancy. And I just want clarification, I'm sure it's implied within there, but when the drainage engineer must be submitted and approved by the local planning authority, that the implication is that it will go to the Leeds Local Flood Authority for their sign-off.
That was a yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Mulliner, you had further questions?
I was going to make a comment. Trying to give councillor Hyman some comfort, that it's almost a year since Sweetman, and in that time, the ministry, the planning inspectorate, Natural England have all had ample opportunity to change their tune if they thought they should do. Indeed, with the ministry pushing out a new NPPF literally in the last 48 hours, the only change they made in that respect is to paragraph 177, which has nothing to do with our particular case. So it could be, and if you read not only the cases, but the various sets of chambers who specialise in these areas, they've been commentating on the European cases for the last year. And I think they're looking forward very eagerly to a number of challenges in due course. But my feeling is that the right place for these debates is in a court of law, possibly in the High Court, possibly in the Court of Justice, the European Union, if we're still involved. But it's not here in a council chamber. And I, for one, am happy to take the officer's advice, that if the superior bodies to us, Natural England, the Planning Inspectorate and the ministry are happy, then we have no reason to think we're doing anything wrong by being equally happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lee, as the other ward councillor, would you like to start the debate?
Chairman, may I make a point of personal explanation in response to the criticism by councillor Mulliner? Because the decision has been made in the courts, and the people who he says should be, would have changed their views are the very people whose strategy has been, for the past 12 years, has been found unlawful. They are not about to put their hands up, like no one in this room is about to put their hands up, and admit that what they've been doing for the past 12 years is unlawful. That has been determined by the ruling. It applies to us. We have to interpret it that way. Of course, there's 100,000 homes dependent upon it. It's a lot of money, chairman.
All right, councillor Hyman, we're not really here to debate that. Once again, you're not going to change...
No, we're not. The law applies.
You're not going to change the council's mind, the council officers, our legal department. They've taken advice. They've given you their opinion, and you're not going to change it here tonight while we're discussing the land opposite Milford Golf Club and 200 houses. So I'd invite councillor Lee to speak.
Thank you, chairman. Just to say, the parish council, the residents, and those that pass through Milford, particularly on Station Lane, have contributed to my understanding of the conditions that apply to us in Milford. I found many comments echoed my own experiences as a motorist and pedestrian along Station Lane, from the Church Road Portsmouth Road roundabout to the railway station. As a motorist, passing difficulties and frustrations are encountered, stopping and waiting when the large commercial vehicles want to pass, incidents of curb mounting when two large vehicles are trying to pass each other. I agree with the many correspondents who point out there will inevitably be additional traffic from the Dunsfield Park and Aaron's Hill developments, and no additional road capacity is planned. As a pedestrian, the Station Lane footpath is not fit per purpose. Bank erosion obscures the available footpath width. There's overgrown banks and walling. There's broken down retaining walls. There's flooding from the golf course at the wet spots. All this necessitates stepping into the road when oncoming pedestrians are faced. Towards the bridge, the stone wall leans towards the road, tending to force a pedestrian nearer the curb. There are varying footpath widths from 450mm to two metres. Over these past weeks, I have been working with the parish council and our Surrey County councillor to achieve improved outcomes. When this site was offered for development, for preparation of local plan part one, I and others considered it had a number of advantages: adjacent to the heart of the village, and within walking distances of the railway station, the village amenities, also Milford School and Rodborough School with its visionary plans to provide a community performing arts centre, 3G football pitch, and sports pavilion, new sports hall extension, and new science block, new football pitch and cricket square layout. We felt there was great potential to reduce car journeys, the need for the end-of-the-journey parking, pollution, reduce pollution, and provide natural exercise, a quantum of customers to further support local businesses. The Golf Course offered the site, and their ownership extended to the east of Station Lane, almost up to the station. With this foundation, we expected that noticeable improvements would be possible. There's been changes, of course. Golf Course has sold off the site. The original figure of 180 dwellings identified in local plan part one has increased to 200, something like an 11% uplift. Why? The local plan was judged sound with the figure of 180 by the inspector. This suggests to me that there is now a greater housing density, to the detriment of those who will occupy the dwellings. All users of Station Lane have witnessed worsening traffic conditions with the present traffic volumes and vehicle types. I've received 75 pictures showing the variety and size of the commercial vehicles. The update sheet that we've received states the Station Lane priority junction with Church Road and the Portsmouth Road mini roundabout junction is approaching theoretical capacity, which I find worrying for the future. Also, the Highways Authority and local planning authority consider congestion alone does not imply a severe impact, and admit it will get worse. I believe that those of us who are in congestion conditions, bringing about journey delays and frustrations, will disagree. I do. Can I come back with a little bit more, or not?
Just a bit.
I'll try. If this application is granted, we must have the road and footpath capacity. And although those particular conditions have been put in to try and secure those improvements, which I am passionately behind, to show some real benefit in this development, do I have sufficient confidence that these necessary provisions for a sustainable infrastructure will succeed? I am very unsure about that, given the history of Crown Golf, who in my eight years in Milford, has not managed the boundary between the golf course and the pathway at all. The footpath improvements limited to footpath widening...
Can you sum up, please, councillor Lee?
Right. I'm also disturbed to think that two sizable applications could be developed concurrently, without us seeing the actual impact on the infrastructure from one development before the other is begun. The highways traffic modelling produces theoretical projections that we should be aware may not be accurate in reality. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Councillor follows.
Thank you, Chair. If I can just start by thanking officers for dealing with the flurry of emails and questions since the site visit, and also to the parish council for responding to a lot of requests for clarification information. If the Chair will just permit one very small indulgence before I start on the planning matters, I just want to reinforce my frustration, irritation that we are here eight days before SIL coming into effect. Many of the infrastructure issues that we are going to likely complain about stem from that. The local plan said that we needed the extra money for infrastructure. We aren't going to get it, that's why. But on to the specifics. We've seen significant objections, as we did with the development in my own ward a couple of weeks back, from the community. The Chair of the parish council, I think, made the point absolutely clear. We must challenge, or at very least properly and thoughtfully, consider some of the rulings of statutory bodies. I also believe that their concerns being converted into conditions are problematic, as the scope and complexity of those conditions in combination will be difficult to enforce. Also, waiting to reserve matters, as has been discussed for many of these items, allows the principle of development to be established, and therefore curtails future action from this chamber and ties our hands. It also concerns me how the facade of localism falls away when we actually get into this room. I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say a significant proportion of the local community would prefer an alternative site, as indicated within their own neighbourhood plan. For myself, I honestly found the site visit extremely illuminating. The road was actually quite busy, even though it was half-term, as it was pointed out that it might be quieter, but actually it was very busy. The expansion of the business up at Tuesday Lane, I think, is also going to add some more traffic to that. I've been over to the site my own time as well, and you do see a lot of lorries, and you do see a lot of cars, and at pretty excessive speeds. I also noted during our formal visit, the impact of even a very small amount of rain on the area, which I think does give pause when you think about the amount of land that's going to be concreted over by this development and car parking. Secondly, concerns regarding the sang. Councillor McCollum from the parish and a number of others wanted to go over to the sang site, which of course then created that rather surreal moment of us all crossing the golf course in the middle of a game. But what we did see, I think, was land that you find difficult to see being used as a sang in that manner. It's extremely inappropriate for what it is. I mean, it's got some barbed wire that separates it from the golf course, and then effectively the River Oak. I think the only people probably using it at the moment are going to retrieve golf balls. I worry about the privacy impact on the houses adjacent the other side. I don't see any consideration of that within this application at present. It's also been my observation that the JPC has in many cases caved on developments where it thinks it's going to lose an appeal. And I mentioned the issue regarding the legal challenges to this site earlier, and I actually think in this case, we are faced between either a potential appeal if we refuse, or the site not being delivered for legal challenges. And if that's the case, frankly, I think we should refuse it, because if it's going to be challenged anyway, we might as well do the right thing and back the community objections in the process. It would be the absolute right thing to do. So to conclude, I don't believe 200 houses on this site would be sustainable, whether or not that be prefixed with the words 'up to' or not. If we put the words 'up to', it means they can. We shouldn't allow that in good conscience. We should never allow things to happen that we don't want to. And certainly without the extra infrastructure contributions it would require, it's absolutely, for me, a non-starter. So unless I am convinced by others in this debate, my current thinking is to vote to refuse this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holder?
Thank you, chairman. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said, but I would bring your attention to the fact that we're talking about sang, which is suitable, alternative, natural, green space. What is proposed is neither suitable, nor alternative, nor natural, and it's certainly not green space. In 2013, the River Oak overflowed its banks to such a state that the gardens at Oakfield on the other side of the road were flooded. In fact, the flooding extended across the fairway of the 11th Green. So if we were to build 200 houses on this site, which is on a hill, then the runoff from the concrete of those houses would just exacerbate any future flooding from the River Oak. The whole site is completely unsuitable. And on top of that, when the River Oak did overflow in 2013, the road was closed because they couldn't, vehicles couldn't get round the bridge, because it was flooded. They had to have a deviation. If we're going to have climate change with wetter and wetter summers, then this will happen more and more times. I really think that there should be some investigation in exactly how this is going to work. That's as far as flooding is concerned. As far as the road is concerned, on page 13 of the update sheet, it says that 5,248 cars are now using that lane. This is a country lane. If we're to increase the amount of traffic, how many cars are going to be using it? 6,000? 7,000? It becomes a nonsense. I'm all for a little bit of a development on this site, but not 200 houses. The traffic coming in and out from Station Lane into the site will be queuing up. If you're coming from the Milford direction and you want to go into the site, you've got to cross the road, allowing traffic. You know, it's completely unsuitable. So I think probably 50 houses or so would be suitable on the higher parts of the ground, but above that, I think it's complete nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Holder. Yes, I have to lean towards a lot of your concerns and those of your fellow councillors. Much reference has been made to LPP1 at the beginning of the evening, and that said that the site was suitable for 180 dwellings. So I'd consider that somewhere between 175 and 185. And as councillor Lee pointed out, 200 is an 11% increase, which must come under the heading of overdevelopment somewhere along the line. LPP1 asks for a landscape buffer to the southern boundary. I know the layout we've been given is only illustrative, but somebody's put a lot of work into it, and that doesn't show a landscape buffer. It shows a road and a few existing trees along the boundary. When this site was offered for inclusion in LPP1, the proposal, I seem to remember, talked about the bridge over the stream being widened for two-way traffic, and pedestrian links provided to link the development with the rest of Milford Village. And the final LPP1 document asks for footways and cycleways to the north and west. Now we have a bridge that will be narrower with a shuttle work-in-traffic arrangement, so-called, basically give way signs that can only increase congestion. And the nearest we get to links to the village is a new condition asking that the applicant explores the potential for such links. The sang, I go along with all your points about the sang, and I just worry about the highways and this pedestrian link, that, you know, we can put in a condition, a grampian condition, and they can appeal it. And if they want grounds for appeal, they only have to refer to the original report, which raises no concerns. So I'm just very concerned about this whole applicant. I think there's too many unknowns for me, really. I know it's outlined with just access, and we've had plenty of those before, but all these things that suddenly popped up yesterday afternoon with footways going through, et cetera, and I don't feel that there's enough information, certainly for me, to make an informed decision. But I will wait to hear what others have to say. Councillor Vojj.
Thank you, chairman. I won't take this opportunity to harp on about the history of being warned and be careful of what you wish for. We spoke in this chamber a long time ago about losing greenfields, and you thought you were going to be safe. Watch out, because you're not, and this case absolutely proves it. And I won't go on about what's happened to Cranley, because I don't want to make it local. What I would like to know from officers is, if members are minded to reject this application, what does it do to the five-year housing supply and the impact on the most vulnerable parts of the borough, who have already taken the lion's share, including Cranley and Farnham, because they do not have the protection of the green belt? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Elizabeth, would you like to address that? Elizabeth, would you like to address that?
So, thank you, Chairman. The challenging part of the housing delivery test in requiring us now to apply a 20% buffer means the reality is, we're very close to just having five years. That is today's headline. You'll have sat through various inquiries recently, particularly in Farnham and Hazelmeir, where you've heard developers challenge the five-year supply and take apart its components in terms of whether or not we can legitimately expect these sites to come forward in the five-year period. It is a very, very challenging environment. In the end, we have no control over whether developers build or not, and we have to do our very utmost to keep up the dialogue with developers and understand what their plans are. But in the end, of course, the market dictates the timing of build-out. So I come back to what I said in my opening statement, it wasn't intended to be any sort of threat, it was just a reality check. This site is allocated for local, in the local plan, for development purposes for up to 180 dwellings. Yes, the current description is slightly more than that, but as I also said, that doesn't mean you are committing to 200 dwellings. It may well be, in the end, your reserve matters consideration finds quite a bit less than that to be acceptable, because all the other considerations will need to be complied with for the reserve matters to be approved. If permission is refused, then that of course will mean that other sites coming forward in more vulnerable parts of the borough will argue the tilted balance applies, because Waverley doesn't have a five-year housing land supply. And the reality is that those areas of the borough that are not as protected, i.e. Cranley, Farnham, parts of Hazelmeir, by green belt are more vulnerable, and we've experienced that. That is just a function of where we are. So I would ask you to be really mindful of that position. This is a strategic site, it has already got an allocation. We've gone through the arguments through the local plan process of debating whether it's an appropriate site or not. Many people didn't agree with that, but the council adopted the plan on that basis, so the principle has been established. This is therefore now whether you feel that at reserve matter stage, a scheme to provide up to 200 dwellings could be found to be acceptable, but all those matters are still to be decided. So you still have fully within your gift the power to reject anything that you didn't find acceptable on those matters that are outstanding. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Vojacevski, you wish to come back?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to come back. Many of the points that have been raised are very valid, and I have a great deal of empathy. But it does worry me a great degree as to what would happen. When we look at what happened to the greenfields in Cranley and the allocation of houses, it was totally disproportionate to the most vulnerable part of the borough. It doesn't have a train station, it doesn't have pavements to go over, one of the bridges, but there's one road out, there's one road in. And the infrastructure was not there. We went to, we've had several strategic sites come forward, we fought hard in this chamber to protect those, but we lost at every step of the way. And that is in an area which has got much less sustainability criteria than an area like this on this application. My worry is, is that, looking at the housing numbers, it's got to be fair across the borough. The objectively assessed need is not allocated into one area like Cranley or Farnham, it's borough-wide, and that should be recognised. But I haven't heard anything here this evening that makes me think, no, we should be voting against it, because in the past, all the same arguments were presented, all the same issues, all the same highway problems have been presented to us, and they all got granted, whether on appeal or whether by members. So I don't see that this is any different in any way, shape or form, except to say that it was an inspector who took this parcel of land out of the green belt. We found our local plan to be sound, which gave the rest of the borough protection on the basis of this parcel of land. This now could jeopardise all that, and I think we now need to be realistic. There was one statement that was made by one of my colleagues, which said, one of the worst-case scenarios, let me tell you about one of the worst-case scenarios. In Cranley, we had 5,000 from Horsham on our boundaries, we had Dunsfold Park. So the worst-case scenario for us was that we got Dunsfold Park and all the housing in Cranley. The next worst-case scenario is that if applications like this don't, aren't passed on the merit that they deserve to be, is that we will once again have the worst-case scenario of taking the excess from the rest of the borough, who won't take it, into Cranley and into places like Farnham where we don't have that protection. And I think that is a real fear for me as a local ward member in an area that doesn't have infrastructure, it doesn't have a railway station, it doesn't have access to some of the facilities the applications like this have. Whilst unfortunate as it is, this was on the cards a long time ago, and it's a shame it's happening. No one's fought harder than I have to protect our greens, greenfields. But at the end of the day, to be fair, to provide our objectively assessed housing need, it has to be borough-wide, and it has to be fair. And it would not be fair for Cranley or Farnham to take excess housing, because we don't have green belt protection. We have a sound local plan that I fought for and supported on that basis to give places like where I represent protection. Thank you for listening to me, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you. I just wanted to say the Thames Water comments that actually have been made, again, as councillor Vojacevski has said, it was exactly the same in Cranley, that initially there was a problem with the sewerage, and then Thames Water found an accommodation. So that is normal across the borough, I'm afraid. I'm not sure whether or not there is any, looking through the actual conditions, Condition 20, which has been imposed by the lead local flood authority, is very, very specific about discharge rates, which I take great comfort from. The fact that they've actually put a discharge rate in there of, I think it's 16.5 or something, is a great comfort, that the actual suds on this site are going to be very heavily monitored and created. I do share some considerations about the sang, and the actual position of the sang and the makeup of the sang. And I'm also very, very mindful of the neighbourhood plan group. Having done the neighbourhood plan in Cranley, you know, it's such hard work, people put all those hours in, for them, you know, voluntary hours in to create a plan that is locally supported. And I would just urge perhaps, if this should go through, that the developers work perhaps, whether or not there is any informative or something that we can say about a liaison group, or working with the neighbourhood plan on this site, then perhaps there is something that we could do with that to assist in the locals feeling that they had some control over perhaps the reserve matters stage. There was, when we were early discussing, something saying about there would only be two-story houses on this site. And again, I'm not sure whether or not there can be an informative or anything about that, but to ensure that it doesn't then exceed any kind of two stories, that it stays within the level of two stories and doesn't end up creeping into two and a half stories, which actually is three stories. And one other thing, councillor Follows mentioned about the Tuesday Farm down the road, and I am aware that the refrigerated vehicles are usually about 2.6 metres wide, and that perhaps highways, I'm sure you've considered that already, but it's just something perhaps to be aware of, because I am very concerned about the, you know, the central refuge and the width of the road, because this is an allocated school walk route. And so that, would please take that into account, should this application go through. So that's just some of the things that I wanted to raise. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Councillor Malinow.
Thank you, Chairman. I will be briefer than councillor Vojacevski, although I understand entirely where she's coming from. I think unfortunately, we're in a situation none of us relish. We have a housing need. The number is still officially under challenge, but we have to work with the one that we've got. As Mrs Simms said, this has been allocated for development in local plan, and because we're talking about an outline application, we do have the power at reserve matters to make sure that the application meets our precise needs. And my concern is that if we delay matters by refusing now, I'm sure that there will be an appeal. I would be surprised if we got away with, without a cost award. And I think the most constructive approach is to make use of reserve matters to get the best possible outcome from this application, and have some hope of meeting future housing delivery tests. I mean, that's going to cause huge problems across the borough if we don't. And although 79% is better than was hoped, it's hardly a great start. So I think this is a case where there's no ideal outcome, but I see far more downsides through refusal than upsides. So barring what other people say, which I'll take into account, I'm minded to support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Follows, you wish to come back?
Thank you, Chair. With the greatest of empathy and respect to the deputy mayor's comments, when I'm sitting in this chamber and I'm making some of my statements, which are often considered not planning matters, shall we say, I'm often reminded by other members and officers that we must only be considering the actual application in front of us. Now, to what level am I supposed to sit here and consider second and third order consequences to other parts of the borough when factoring in my assessment of the planning merits of this application? Because in my opinion, yes, I admit there might be some consequences, but does that mean that we allow applications that we do not believe are reasonable or good to go through based on fear of the unknown? Am I supposed to just be considering the application or all of these other issues? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hyman.
Sorry, I was hoping we might have an answer to those first, but never mind. Chairman, I've been thinking about what you said, and I raised the issue earlier of EIA, and I'd asked the question in advance. And we've had it confirmed that it is within our authority to insist that we have further information, that we treat this as EIA development, because it does exceed the criteria for EIA development. It is over five hectares, it is in fact, was it 13.3, I think, hectares overall, so it's considerably over the threshold for area for EIA. It is over 150 homes as well. But there is a further criteria that we have to apply, and that is, is there potential for significant environmental effects? That really is the most important consideration. I'm sure your officers or our officers and lawyers will be happy to confirm that that is a pretty good summary of where we stand. You've quite rightly said, there's so many things we don't know about this. And of course, this is the whole point of EIA legislation, where there is likely to be, or there's a danger, a risk of a significant effect, environmental impact. We need all the information in advance if it's EIA development. We can't just put things under condition, we can't leave assessments till later on under conditions. So, you know, I would suggest to members that if they feel the same way as the chairman, which I do, that they would support me in a motion or propose a motion themselves to refuse this on grounds that it should be considered EIA development, and that we could also be helpful to the developer to define the areas in which we would want what we'd consider a Regulation 25 request for further information to be, because, you know, a lot of the transport issues, the flooding issues, and the habitats issues specifically, perhaps one or two others members would want further information before we would want to grant consent or agree the principle of this development, because that's what this is about. We do have that option, Chairman. I think I'd probably leave it to someone else to put it forward, I think it's exactly the right thing to do. But that is an option, and it would be entirely lawful and proper, in my view, to do so. I'd invite the officers' comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Officers, do you wish to comment? And does any member wish to make such a proposal? Let's let the officer comment first. Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman. Just first of all, I do agree with your assessment insofar as how the regulations apply. This does exceed the threshold set out in Schedule 2, so as to mean that it's a Schedule 2 application. In order for it to become EIA development, you're right in saying that the decision-making authority has to consider whether it's going to have likely significant effects on the environment. That's precisely the exercise that was carried out by the officer in the screening opinion. And as Elizabeth said, much of that is based on technical evidence, which is assessed against the criteria set out in Schedule 3 of the EIA regulations. I would support what Elizabeth said previously, in that normally that's a matter for officers to consider. I would suggest that unless there is good reason or sound evidence to suggest that a contrary decision should be taken, then her assessment should be followed in this case. I have to say, I'm not aware that there are necessarily any good reasons or sound evidence to suggest that a different view should be taken. So for those reasons, I would support the screening opinion as it currently stands. I know that there is case law for habitats, which relates to the screening process, which I think is probably analogous to EIA screening as well, where courts have confirmed that the authority doesn't necessarily need all available evidence before it in order to come to a view as to whether a development is likely to have likely significant effects. It's the LID Airport case, which says that, in that case, as I say, in relation to habitats, the authority were, and subsequently the inspector, were entitled to come to the conclusion that a scheme wouldn't have likely significant effects, even though they were aware that they didn't have all of the necessary information before them. So I think that probably supports the situation that we are in here, and my view that we are able to conclude that it won't have likely significant effects on the information we have for us. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Lewis. So councillor Hyman, would you like to make that proposal, please?
Yes, I do, I would like to propose that can the permission be refused on grounds that it does constitute, that this council has, or the members have the authority to determine that it is EIA development, as the LID Airport case said. It is the council's job, the competent authority's decision as to whether or not EIA is necessary. So either way, and we have that right. And as the speakers, certainly Mr House and Mrs Macaulden have laid out, there is so much information that's missing and questionable. And as you've said yourself, Chairman, and most of the other members here who don't have a sort of, like, a personal ward's interest in getting the development stuffed into Milford, we are in a position where we don't know very much about what the impacts will be.
Okay, we've got your proposal. Do you have a second, or?
Please, a second, Chair.
Thank you. So you've heard the proposal from councillor Hyman, all those in favour? Against?
One, two, three. Four, five.
Sorry, that, abstentions, one. Thank you. That motion was defeated. Councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As I see it, we're between a rock and a hard place. We have policy SS6, and I'll come back to that in a minute, which presumes there's development on this site. We have all the statutory authorities, and I've heard of, you know, the change their mind as set up by the parish council, but at the present time, they all are very clear, it would appear, they have no objections, including the Highway Authority, Thames Water, and so on. And therefore, to find a good reason to refuse, in my view, is going to be a great difficulty. The only avenue of sort of hope I have, or particular concern I have, is that policy SS6 says allocated for around 180 homes. Now, in my book, around 180 homes doesn't equal up to 200. It increases the ante, and whatever we may say at reserve matters stage, if we grant it, there'll be a sort of presumption that 200 is okay. And I ask the question as to if the committee was minded to refuse on the basis that this is potentially overdevelopment, and that 200 houses is too much for this site, and that around 180 homes is our policy, and presumably that number of 180 was not arrived at by just thinking of a number and halving it or doubling it. It was clearly a fairly scientific matter. To take into account the screening required all round, taking into account the flood situation, and taking into account the road and all the other factors. But then, of course, all the statutory authorities aren't objecting to up to 200. But even so, I just wonder whether we have any possibility of refusing this without it going to costs on an appeal, if we should refuse it on the basis- it going to costs on an appeal, if we should refuse it on the basis that it's, I think, 11%, I think so, I haven't done the arithmetic, but I think the local ward member had done a calculation, whether that could give us any mileage.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend, do you wish to come back?
I was just going to make a similar point in the weight because of the policy SS6 and the local plan. That has considerable weight in our deliberations, and whether or not the, again, the 180 houses and the 200 made, if that had any weight at all. So similar question. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, do you wish to address that?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. It's an interesting one, because that 180, I would imagine, came through the original call for sites, when the site was promoted, as an indicative number in terms of what this site could deliver if the council were to take it on as a site for the local plan. Those numbers are, generally speaking, what the developer anticipates as being capable of being achieved, but all the detailed assessments are subject to the onward plan-making process, and after that, the planning application process. So it's not set in stone, there's certainly no evidence to suggest that slightly more than 180 could not be satisfactorily achieved through the local plan process. It's always been about, in the end, that number would be firmed up through the planning application process. I do recognise members are concerned about that. What I would suggest, rather than refusing it on that basis, which I think probably would have some weaknesses at appeal, you asked me that direct question, I think it would be perfectly acceptable for you to add a strongly worded informative to advise the applicants in granting outline consent, you're mindful of the local plan position, but that you are not committing in any way to 200 dwellings on this site, and it may even be that the local plan allocation of 180 is not achievable either, and that the test, in the end, will be that an acceptable scheme at reserve matters stage is demonstrated to be capable of a grant of reserve matters consent. And then I think that would, I mean, that power is open to you in any event, that's normal practice, that's the other half of the planning permission. But perhaps that will give you more confidence that when it comes to that discussion at a later stage, that is the starting point for officers' negotiation, that, you know, we're now looking at a scheme that can be accommodated on the site, meet all the other criteria, and whatever number that comes out at, and hopefully that would cover that off.
Councillor Townsend, you wish to come back?
I just want to ask, just supplementary to that, so when the reserve matters comes forward at any stage, then as part of that, the sequential test approach would be applied to the flood zones then as well, wouldn't it, be sequentially tested?
The layout would need to comply with the site-specific flood risk assessment to accommodate the development in the low flood risk part of the site.
I've got several people that want to come back. Councillor Follows, briefly, please.
Yes, briefly, and also with a motion. I think that we shouldn't be dealing with us at reserve matters, it says 200 on what we've got in front of us, I think that's too much. I think most of us agree with that, is they are in excess of SS6, so I would like to motion for refusal on grounds that it is excessive in regards to SS6.
Do you wish to make that proposal now, or shall we wait for the recommendation? Because it's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
I'll wait for a minute then for what's the rest of the debate, but otherwise that stands, please, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vorjesewski, you wish to come back, and then councillor Goodridge.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, just very quickly, and thank you for letting me come back. Whilst I can appear, it may appear that I'm being very pro not putting everything in crandly, believe me, that is not the case, but it's about being fair, because my past experience in this chamber, looking at a number of strategic applications, did guide me in making a decision on this application on its own merit, based on the fact that I heard nothing new this evening, that it hasn't contradicted planning policy, material planning considerations, the history of planning applications before this one. However, the one thing that I do agree with, as I think, again, going back to the local plan, the figure of 180 should not be exceeded. There has to be something that we decide tonight that says that figure should not be exceeded. I'm not sure, Elizabeth put it very eloquently, I'm not sure I understood exactly how that would work in the decision-making process this evening, but that is what we agreed in the local plan, that's what the local plan was found sound on, and I think that is what we should be agreeing here tonight, is 180 and no more. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I think we all know that if we approve 200, 200 it will be. Councillor Byam.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I've sat near here and listened to a range of arguments and discussions either both ways. Your points strongly made, and quite understandably, I'm reflective on those, and the concerns about sudden changes to all these things. I then listened to Mary's point, and with regard to Crandley and everything else, and I think, well, there's a strong point here. When this first site first came on the radar, I and many others thought, that's a perfect solution in many ways. It's close to the A3, it's close to Godleming, it's very close to a railway station, it's close to schools. Everything is going for it. It's a piece of land which the Gulf Club have soldiered on with, but it's on the wrong side of the road. But then I look at this sang provision, I'm not a great advocate of sang, as people will know. I just cannot believe it's necessary, but that's beside the point. What they're proposing here is a sang through some scrubby, overgrown woodland, which is supposedly, what is it, in a floodplain? It looks awful. Who would ever want to walk their dogs in that area? Are they going to buy dogs that are capable of walking on boardwalks? Where are the dog litter bins going to be on the boardwalks? All these things come into my mind, it just seems to be a strange concept to put it in that way, and I just don't like it. So I'm still betwixt and between as to which way to go to vote when we come forward. I agree with this comment about the 180 homes. Why do developers, having had figures given to them, then decide, oh, let's grab a little bit more? And I have something in my own village which has come to light recently, where somebody came forward and asked to put eight homes on a particular site, and we said, oh yeah, that's good, that's interesting, we'll put that in our neighbourhood plan. And then they come back with their drawings for 14 homes. And I had to tell the guy today, I said, I don't think your numbers are acceptable, but it hasn't been judged by anybody yet, but I think your liability would be not back on that particular point. So why do they do it? Why do they want to keep on grabbing more?
Greed.
My colleague next to me says greed. It would be interesting to know whether they want to put 300 houses if SIL did apply to this particular site because of the massive extra charges that would come about as opposed to the Section 106 agreements. So I'm still sitting on the fence here, I'm still waiting to hear the definitive statement from somebody to tell me which way I'm going to vote, but from what I saw at the very beginning, how good it was, potential aside, I now am unhappy with a number of aspects.
Thank you. Councillor Nazir.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First, I would like to ask a question to the traffic department. When they were saying that it's 55 kids who cross the road and go to school, have they considered the houses which will have their kids going to the school as well? So apart from that, and I'll conclude my speech after he gives me the answer. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the additional demand from schoolchildren has been considered, and that's reflected in the improved crossing, zebra crossing adjacent to the junction. That's been specifically proposed in consultation with the school. And then all the other footpath improvements that I've seen gone through earlier.
Thank you. The second thing is, I always go on the site with my family to see it. I wouldn't like my children to cross it if there's strictly traffic things are put on there. And I agree with councillor, and the deputy mayor regarding it, that she is heartbroken at what happened in her area. I would consider it to be lower houses than 180 or 180, not more than that. So I would like Elizabeth to consider that, but rejecting it totally, it's not possible, it could be done over there. But traffic should be strongly seen into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bann.
Thank you, Chairman. Like others, I've got some difficulty with this particular application, and I got particular difficulty inasmuch that it doesn't follow my understanding of what is in the local plan part one exactly. I mean, there were, it's not just the 180 houses, it's the other conditions which you rightly pointed out, Chairman, which I think are quite material to making this site potentially acceptable. And they're not there in this application. And that gives me even more cause for concern, because I think they were quite important to the consideration of the site, you know, the formal link to Robborough, the widening of the bridge to, you know, doubling the width of the bridge, and so on. These sort of things, I think, are important to the possibility of making this site accommodate houses, but they're not in this application. And it seems to me that, you know, together with all the unknowns, that in terms of the true adequacy of a drainage system, the true condition of the sangs, and the true condition of the maybe unobtainable improvements to the roadway, make me wonder, would we ought not to be considering deferring this application? Do we get some more information on some of these outstanding issues, and we're in a better position to judge? I know some people might say this is a cop-out, but there seems to be so much information not with us, it makes it, it seems to me, it makes it extremely difficult to make a proper judgment as to what might or might not be appropriate on this site. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend, you wish to come back briefly, please.
I was just regarding the proposal for, which I think councillor Goodridge was going to make, so I will defer to him about whether or not there could be an informative about the housing numbers, so I will defer to councillor.
Councillor Goodridge.
Yes, having raised the question of SS6 and around 180 homes, I heard what councillor, well, Elizabeth Sims said, and it seems to me to have an informative about that, and maybe that the other points in SS6 ought to be addressed at the detailed stage, at the reserve matters stage, would be helpful. And also, I was going to suggest another informative relating to the runoff on the, quote, wet spots, to give strength to the Highway Authority to strengthen their arm in respect of negotiations with the Gulf Club concerning the land on the east of Station Lane.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Follows, you wish to come back?
I'm going to take the opportunity to try and convince councillor Byam, I think, particularly, because you raised the question of looking to be convinced by the argument. And what I think here is, a couple of weeks back, we kicked out a development because it didn't meet the housing standards for affordable housing and others, and we all sat here and we were aggrieved by it greatly, and we kicked it out because it was the right thing to do, and the developer came back and did it right, and it was good. What we've got here is a developer that's putting an application in before SIL, they've decided to look at the 180 that they could have had, and they've decided to be, as councillor Fraser put it, greedy, and take 200. I vote that we punish that greed for what it is, and we make them put this application in anew at the numbers that the local plan says they can, 180 or less, and that they will then have to pay that SIL. That is why we should do that, because it's the right thing to do, and because they have given us reason to do it by exceeding what we have said they can do in the local plan. So I would like to reassert my motion to reject this, because it is excessive under SS6. Thank you.
Is that a formal proposal?
It is, Chair.
Right, do you have a second, er? Councillor Hyman. So the proposal before you, does anybody wish to speak to that proposal? Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I don't think that's a material consideration, that the fact that we could use the SIL to, for reason of refusal, and I think that, sorry, I think that the reason for refusal on the grounds if there's an informative for the housing numbers, if that could be put on, perhaps Elizabeth Sims could reply to that, but also, there isn't, I can't see, unfortunately, having gone through several different appeals that have been put forward in my experience in the past, I cannot see that we have come up with a real material consideration that would stand up against an appeal. And as much as we might like to find that, I haven't heard one put forward really for that, so that would be my reason to not support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Follows.
So just to clarify, the actual material reasons are because it's excessive under SS6. The question I would then add to this is, to what point do we allow developers to go over what the local plan says? 11%? 15%? 30%? Where do we decide that they've gone too far? Are we so afraid of appeal that we won't even assert the local plan you all voted for? Do we not need to make a stand here? Thank you.
Does anybody else wish, councillor Byam, you wish to speak to, and then councillor Storey, councillor Vorjesewski?
I have to thank councillor Follows for giving me the advice, which is great. I don't agree with the idea that we ought to be punishing anybody. We disagree with something, we're not here to punish, we're quite a judicial body to make a decision on the application that's come forward, and what's been said, and whether we like it or lump it. And therefore, there is perhaps a good reason, many good reasons, to refuse it, but if we didn't, if we refuse it, there's always, this site has been allocated for housing, and I suspect that the majority of the objectors wouldn't want 10 houses on this site, let alone 200, and would they like 150? I think the people will object to this site for many, many reasons for a long, long time, and at some stage, we're going to have to get off the pot and actually make a decision. We're here tonight to do that. Whether that concludes the issue, or whether it draws to another application coming forward, or modifications to the application coming forward, I don't know, but it's a serious problem. We talk about the sang and the problem of flooding. I went walking down by the river near my house today, it's in a floodplain. I didn't get too wet, I was okay, and I haven't done for the last five years, that particular patch of garden hasn't flooded for the last five years, but it's in a floodplain. We spend too much time thinking about it. Do people want to take their dogs out when there's floods?
Thank you. Councillor Storey.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I was appalled to hear a member of this committee suggesting punishing a developer. I think that is entirely the wrong sort of message. Secondly, it's my belief that the figures involved in local plan part one are indicative and not prescriptive. And so to say 200 is not going outside of the policy, it may be more than we're happy to accept, but then that's down to us to look at when they come forward with their actual housing number on the detailed application. That's all I wanted to say at this stage.
Thank you. Councillor Vorjesewski.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for your indulgence. I think what we have to remember this evening is, what we're here to decide upon is establishing the principle of development on this site, and councillor Byam has very eloquently already described the consequences of not using a site that hasn't been identified. I would also say that the application that councillor Follows talked about, absolutely correct, this council stood firm and sent a very clear message out to the developer that that wasn't good enough, but it was done under reserved matters when the applicant had come back to us with detailed planning application. Now, the same would be said to the developer over there, is that we're sending out a clear message that if we're going to lose our beautiful green fields in inappropriate places, that if we are going to give permission to build because the constraints of the law and planning principle, then we want the best of the best of the best, because the application will come back, it will come back under reserved matters, and this committee, once again, has the divine right to chuck it out because it doesn't meet the standard we expect. And that's the message I'd be sending out there to the developer, we've done it once, we'll do it again, and reserved matters is the time to clear that up. So on the basis of that we've got an informative of 180, I would be supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We're talking about councillor Follows' proposal at the moment. Councillor Holder, you wish to speak to the proposal?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. There are, I think this application has been pretty well rushed through, and there are lots of inconsistencies, as councillor Bann has pointed out. I'm just wondering, if we do defer it, and we defer it beyond March 1st, will the applicant then have to confine with the SIL regulations rather than the 106?
Simple answer to that is yes. Simple answer to that is yes. It's recommendation C on your report sheet. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, in respect of the 180 under policy SS6, I am very concerned that the idea of simply trying to address this through an informative will have absolutely no legal standing whatsoever. I mean, we have to place conditions upon a consent if we're going to try and restrict them properly. An informative will have no legal effect. We can be told in six months' time, if one comes forward, that, hey, well, you decided you want an informative there, but unfortunately the developer decided not to, and you did grant consent for up to 200, that was what it was in the decision notice, and so I'm sorry, tough, you know, you made a mistake, don't be so stupid next time. We've already seen the residents who so patiently have sat there and so quietly have sat there and respectfully, have heard this room already decide that it's not going to pay the attention that is required and give the consideration required by law to the habitat's constraints. They've already heard...
We're talking to councillor Follows' proposal, which you seconded, which was nothing to do with environment agencies or bird counts or anything, it was to do with the overdevelopment of the site. Thank you.
Absolutely. And in that respect, obviously, the EIA considerations are the overdevelopment of the site, chairman. I can't see how it's not relevant, but members have decided they don't want to go down that line.
It wasn't the proposal, councillor Hyman. Can we move on, please? Councillor Townsend?
I thought I might be interrupted and shut up.
Thank you, chairman. I just wanted to, again, speaking about the housing numbers and the reality of these strategic sites, and what probably, I don't know, members that perhaps haven't been here that long and may not have seen the strategic sites go through, within Cranley, and this is not making an excuse about Cranley, but I'm just saying, within Cranley, we had housing numbers. On every single site of those housing numbers, appeals, the developers have come back and the numbers have increased. Now, you know, I'm not saying that that's a reason to approve more here, but the reality is, is that housing numbers can change, and this is up to 200, it may be less. People can hold some, I suppose, confidence in the fact that it will be sequentially tested, which means that the layout has to be within the flood zone one within here, and the design and layout will have to be taken into consideration. So whilst I, in an ideal world, I would not want to be building on, you know, any green field, but this was put forward in the local plan, that does hold considerable weight. And the appeal, and it's not because I think that I'm frightened of them going to appeal, I honestly believe that I haven't heard anything tonight that has been a material consideration that would, including the housing number, which is up to 200, which would perhaps stand up. And believe you me, I have looked through this application very carefully, I have asked lots and lots of questions, I have looked for reasons. It's not that I'm just accepting what is given to me, but I cannot see a reason. So hand on heart, I could not see myself this standing up on appeal, just on the grounds of the up to 200. Thank you.
Councillor Mullinah?
I was going to ask, I think councillor Goodridge put it forward, can we have a clear answer from the officers? What sort of informative could be put forward? And do we have full discretion at the time of reserved matters, perhaps based on the scale and layout, to require a lower number if we thought fit at that time?
Chairman, thank you. I think what I said earlier, I would stand by, that I would recommend a strongly worded informative, which says the applicants are strongly advised that this outline permission does not grant planning permission for 200 dwellings. And the final number of dwellings to be secured on the site will be achieved through an approval of reserved matters, which needs to address appropriately the outstanding matters such that they are. And that is just stating what you already have the power to do. I know that's sometimes not fully appreciated, but that will ping out as a really strong message, that they're getting a planning permission for residential development in principle broadly complies with the local plan policy, but that the final number will need to be determined through the discharge of those reserved matters. And as I said earlier, that might be less, quite a bit less than 180, I'm not talking about quite a bit less than 200. By the time all the matters are satisfactorily discharged, they may well find they can't even achieve 180. So I'm not prejudging it, but that's the reality check, and that is what sometimes happens with these numbers. It is there, as councillor Storey said, it's indicative, it's not binding, it's not binding on us, and it's not an entitlement for them. And I think you can be confident that when you discharge the reserved matters, you can be really clear about what your expectations are, and if you find the layout and the other reserved matters details to be unacceptable, it's still within your gift to reject those. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Just, that was my question. Based on that advice, I'm happy to not support councillor Follows' motion.
Thank you. Councillor Follows, would you just like to state your proposal, and then we'll put it to the vote?
Yeah, I'm, again, reassert my proposal that we reject this on grounds that it's overdevelopment under SS6, and also because I believe that the decision, the consent for 200, as it's written, would, the consent would override that informative. I also believe that the argument that would be used by anybody appealing this or when it reserved matters would be the one used by councillor Storey, that it would be an indicative figure, and we would certainly be up to 200 and possibly more. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's Elizabeth, sorry, I keep trying to call you.
Sorry, chairman. My colleagues have reminded me that I must have anticipated your comments as a planning committee on this, because it was me that recommended to them, they include an informative, which is already set out on page 104, to reflect this very point. And at least I'm consistent with myself. But I would just urge you to have that in mind, that that is a perfectly reasonable condition, and I think it...
Can we make it a condition? Because it's got no power as an informative.
Well, hang on, we've got a proposal from councillor Follows, seconded by yourself, councillor Hyman, that we reject this application on the basis of non-compliance with SS6. Can I have all those in favour with that proposal, please?
One, two, three?
Against?
Fifteen, yeah, that's it.
So can I just double-check there? I think there was actually four in favour, just to clear.
Can we do that again then, please?
All those in favour? Yeah, four.
Oh, who's four?
Councillor Byham.
Oh, sorry, I can't see from here. And then thirteen, yeah, that's fine.
Right, now, so we go back to the original debate, and I've got councillor Stennett wishes to speak.
Thank you, chairman. Firstly, I apologise for being late, I've been in London all day and I got stuck, and I do realise I can't vote. I have grave concerns about the SANG, like most of my colleagues here. And just one other point, that when it floods, we don't know what the level it's going to be through there, so the boardwalks aren't going to be, we don't know, it could be six in the air, but we don't know. So I'd just like to say that I have really got grave concerns about that. And one point I'd like to pick up, as you know, that the heavy goods vehicles were quoted earlier as 2.6, that's totally wrong, they're over three metres now with all the safety mirrors on and everything. So it's just a point worth noting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nizir?
For letting me coming back, I would apologise on behalf of councillor Follows that he is not using his dictionary and saying the words like punishing, and I would like the developer not to run off because of that. And the other thing is that, I'm sorry, I would stand by councillor Townsend and councillor Mike Bann regarding these as deferral. Thank you.
Has somebody proposed that we defer the application? No, okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to this before we move to the... Councillor Mullinah?
I'd just like to echo a comment councillor Byham made about SANG. SANG is there to provide a potentially all-year-round alternative place to walk your dog or just go for a wander. I've always found it slightly strange that National England and the National Trust, for example, are concerned about the impact of visitors to their sites, but of course, they also advertise them and encourage people to come and visit them. It seems to me if we really were concerned about the impact of visitors on the Devil's Punch Bill and High Tidem Commons, you'd have to fence them off and refuse access. But that, of course, is not done. So the point I take from that is that providing SANG is available for most of the time, I'm sure the Ock doesn't flood every day of the year, then it will be there. And speaking as a dog owner myself and understanding the importance of convenience, I would certainly prefer to walk it somewhere close to home, which meant I didn't have to get in the car and all the other kit that goes with that, and drive somewhere, but just take the dog out and let it amuse itself. So unless we are concerned that the SANG is going to be hopeless all year round, I'm, like councillor Byham, not really persuaded that the fact it's close to a river is a bad thing. I won't repeat my earlier remarks, I've been on the lookout for convincing arguments to make me change my mind, but like councillor Townsend, I haven't heard anything which gives me a good reason to vote against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, just to clarify for councillor Mullinah and for councillor Townsend, that obviously without an appropriate assessment, we've got the strongest grounds we can have. The whole purpose of SANGs there is defeated by the fact that if you put a SANG next to a housing estate, then it encourages a disproportionate take-up of dog ownership on that future site, so it's having the opposite effect to intended, and all the evidence suggests so, which is why you will not find an appropriate assessment of it. Nowhere has anyone considered that this is having the opposite effect to intended, that it is the worst thing that the birds on the heath could possibly want, because they do not want there to be an increase in dog ownership. And as councillor Mullinah says, if you've got a convenient place you can take your dog to, then you're more likely to get yourself a dog. And a proportion of those people go to the heath. It is a time bomb, which, when all these buildings and new houses are built out, do threaten to wipe out the species, and we need to have an assessment in front of us to show that it's not going to. It's the whole point, we don't have that, and we must refuse consent, but apparently we're not allowed to consider that, even though the law says we must, chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Follows?
Thank you, chair. Just to clarify for councillor Nizir, I'm here to represent residents, not developers, so I tend to put that into my speeches. Secondly, what I was also just, to councillor Mullinah's point, I'm also not convinced actually that there are arguments for this, as much as we're looking for arguments against it, I'm not also persuaded that there are arguments for it. I would just also like to, chair, if you could just repeat your own objections based on lack of information that you were going through earlier, I would just like to hear those again, if that's all right.
Certainly, I don't feel that there's, I think there's too many grey areas in the information supplied. That's my personal opinion, I've been listening to the debate, like others, hoping, well, the opposite, hoping to hear reasons why I should go along with the officers, but I will reserve my judgement until we come to a vote. Thank you. Councillor Vojacevski?
Thank you, chairman. I think we're going round in circles here. I think we should move to the report and the recommendation. If members haven't made up their mind by now, well, how much longer is it going to take? I think there's been enough debate, I suggest we move to the recommendation. Thank you, chairman.
Is everybody happy for me to go to the recommendation? No, councillor Townsend wants to speak.
I just really quickly wanted the answers to my questions earlier, which was whether or not there could be some informative about a liaison group with the neighbourhood plan, and whether or not there is anything we can do about limiting to two-storey. That was just, if I could have clarification on those two points, then I'm quite happy to proceed.
Officers?
Yes, I'm happy to agree, an informative for a liaison group. I think to limit it to two stories in this instance is too prescriptive. And whilst we were certainly within our design standards, which suggests majority of two stories, I think we would need to allow some design freedom within that, obviously.
And chairman, you will get that control over dealing with scale as a reserve matter. So it's for the applicant to make their case and demonstrate a form of development, so you do have that control, albeit, I agree, I think probably at this stage it would constrain them too much.
I'm sure that in the past we've put informatives on, suggesting that the committee would not be looking favourably on anything higher than two stories.
I think we can add it as an informative. Yeah.
I think that's what I requested, an informative on both of those points, the liaison group and the story.
Okay. Are you happy for me to move to the recommendation? Right. Yes, of course, councillor.
Thank you. I was not saying that the word is for people over here, I live in this borough, all of these councillors live in borough, but I was just referring and saying that councillor Chris has said as well, it is a little harsh word, that's all I said. And we represent the people as well, because we live in this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to the recommendation, which is, I'm going to start speaking before anybody else jumps in. Recommendation A, that subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement within six months of the date of the committee resolution, I'll cut this short, recommendation A, as printed on the update sheet, which you will have, plus extra informatives regarding liaison with the neighbourhood plan group, restricting it to two-storey, the highways' crossing point being increased to two metres in the south-east corner, and an informative in relation to wet spots, that permission be, sorry? Number of houses? Okay. I haven't got that one written down. Okay.
That to 180.
Suggesting to the applicant that they restrict the number to 180 rather than 200, that outline permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five?
And abstentions.
One, two, three.
So permission is granted. We move on to recommendation B, that if the requirements of recommendation A are not met, permission B refused. All those in favour, please? We're on recommendation B, councillor Lee.
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Okay. And recommendation C, that if informal planning permission in respect of recommendation A is issued on the 1st of March or thereafter, then the head of planning be authorised to charge CIL in accordance with the council's approved charging schedule and revise section 106 infrastructure payments. All those in favour, please?
Yeah.
As carried.
Chair, could you just announce the voting numbers on recommendation A, just so I'm clear? Thank you.
Yeah, so there was 10 in favour, five against, and three abstentions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillors. Thank you, members of the public, for your patience and safe journey home.